Welcome to the second virtual council meeting of Norwich City Council. This meeting is being held under the Local Authorities and Police and Crime Panel's Coronavirus Flexibility of Local Authorities and Police and Crime Panel Meetings, England and Wales Regulations 2020, meaning that the decisions made will have the same validity as those made at a meeting held at City Hall. We have elected members of the council attending the meeting. We also have the council's monitoring officer and the director of resources as part of the meeting, as well as democratic services staff to record the votes. Members must be able to hear and, where practical, see other members. Therefore, we ask that all members to keep their video on... Oh, sorry. Computer glitch. Don't go anywhere. Are we okay? Do you want to restart that one again? The last paragraph, just in case someone missed it. Yeah, okay. We have elected members of the council attending the meeting. We also have the council's monitoring officer and director of resources as part of the meeting, as well as democratic services staff to record the votes. Members must be able to hear and, where practical, see other members. Therefore, we ask all members to keep their video on during the business of the meeting. A recording of this meeting will appear on the council's YouTube channel and the meeting will be livestreamed. If we are notified by a colleague in IT that this link is not working, we will take a short adjournment while the issue is resolved. Can I ask participants to ensure that they are muted when not speaking, or you may be muted by an officer to maintain audio quality? The chat function is enabled for members to report technical difficulties and to indicate that they wish to speak on an item, but you will only be able to message the chair and democratic services. If you wish to speak on an item, please use the chat function to indicate during the item. Please do not indicate via chat for future items. Voting will be done by exception. This means that I will ask for votes against, then abstentions, and the remainder of the members present will therefore be voting in favour. I ask that at the appropriate time, you raise your hand clearly in front of your screen and keep it there until we move to the next part of the vote. Please bear with us while we count the votes, but this may take longer than usual, as officers check between screens to ensure all members have been seen. I've received apologies from councillors Ryan and Uten, sorry, and belatedly from councillor Viv Thomas, who's having some computer difficulties and may be joining us later. Actually, there's been a virtual recording for Norwich Pride, which I attended, and that's all because of the lockdown at the moment. Declarations of interest. Do any members have any declarations of interest to make on any items on the agenda? Councillor Maguire?
Yes, councillor Kendrick as well.
All right, wait a minute. Councillor Maguire? Anyone else?
Yes.
Councillor Kendrick?
Yes.
Yeah. Councillor Harris?
Councillor Harris?
Councillor Burgerline?
Councillor Burgerline? Any others?
Yes, Chair, for food poverty, I have another interest.
Councillor Price? Any others? Sorry, yes.
Can he specify my interest? It's the same, other interest for 10B, please.
Sorry, councillor Burgerline.
The same, other interest for 10B, please.
For 10B?
Yes, please.
What interest? And for councillor Maguire? What interest? Can you expand on that?
Other interest for item six.
Councillor Kendrick? Hello? Councillor Kendrick, your declaration of interest. Can you just expand on that? Councillor Harris?
I've got another interest in item six as well, and I know that councillor Kendrick, myself and councillor Maguire will be withdrawing from the meeting at that stage.
So councillor Kendrick, yours is item six too? Six as well? Okay. Yeah, okay. Right, we'll move on to item three. Oh, sorry. Councillor Kendrick? Yeah, well, we've got that, we've registered the item six. Okay, moving to item three, questions from the public. Councillor Stunard? Where is councillor Stunard? Councillor Sands? Sands, so are you... You're declaring an interest?
Not an interest, Lord Mayor, but I had a seven-hour marathon on Teams yesterday, and I've got a quite a bad back injury. If I get up and disappear from camera once in a while, it's to ease the pain in my back. I'm not leaving the meeting, I'll be just out of shot. I just wanted people to know that, just in case it cause any kind of consternation.
Okay, well, thank you for letting us know. Thank you. Councillor Stunard? The declaration of interest, did you ever miss? No?
No, I'm not a director of any of the companies being discussed. I don't think NRL is being discussed in detail today, so I don't think there's any need.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move to item three. Questions from the public, there are no questions that have been received for this meeting. Petitions? No petitions have been received for this meeting either. I'm whizzing through this. Item four, minutes. I call upon councillor Waters to move the minutes for the meeting held on the 23rd of June 2020.
Formally moves, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Burgerline to second the minutes.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
We'll now move to the vote. All those against? Okay, thank you. All those, well, any abstentions? And of course, in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Items five, questions for cabinet members, committee chairs. There are six questions from members of the council to cabinet members, of which notice has been given in accordance with the provisions of Appendix Six of the council's constitution. A copy will be available on the council's website. Members who have asked questions are permitted to put a supplementary question to the cabinet member. Question one. Councillor Osborne, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor. So thank you councillor Waters for your reply, which outlines what a Labour government would have done in regards to the climate emergency if they had won power in the last general election. However, my question was about what you were doing as leader of a Labour council here, and specifically whether you supported the local enterprise partnership, local industrial strategy as a basis for a post-COVID recovery. That strategy, I should highlight, celebrates the significant benefits of the government's road investment strategy, that is, the country's largest ever building road building programme, and it's currently the subject of a legal challenge on the basis that it breaches climate laws. The industrial strategy also commits to protecting the Bacton Gas Terminal until at least 2045, that's 15 years after the 2030 date that the National Labour Party supported for decarbonising energy during the last general election campaign. So I repeat my question, which I have asked several occasions since August last year, do you support the LEP's local industrial strategy, inclusive of its support for continuing to support the fossil fuel industry and road building?
Thank you. Councillor Waters? Oh, muted councillor Waters.
Apologise. So, Lord Mayor, I wonder why I bothered to write an answer to councillor Osborne's question, because I covered off the points that he raised in my answer. And given that the local enterprise partnership has set very testing targets advised by the Tindall Centre, that means that any of the economic activity that is undertaken by the LEP must be informed by the data and the objectives that have been set out as part of the climate change strategy. The other point I would make is this, that it is often councillor Osborne's preference to just fix on one tier of government, and usually that's Norwich City Council. I suppose the point is this, that if we are able to persuade this government to be as ambitious as a Labour government would have been if they'd been elected in 2019, I'm sure that the Bacton Gas Terminal would probably be decommissioned within the timeframe necessary for carbon neutrality to be achieved. So I think sometimes councillor Osborne, you perhaps need to sort of focus on challenging government, rather than challenging a well-performing council like Norwich.
Thank you. Question two, councillor Price, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. I do acknowledge that the pandemic has made hosting an event difficult, but I think that the cabinet member underestimates the public. Residents have seen firsthand what a car-free city centre could be like. We need to build back better, and now is the time to really support Car Free Day. There was a whole six months between Car Free Day 2019 and the lockdown. Can the cabinet member tell me of any work he has undertaken with county colleagues to build for Car Free Day 2020 in those six months, so residents can be assured of this administration's commitment?
Thank you. Councillor Stunard?
I think councillor Price, this is a totally disingenuous question and a totally disingenuous supplementary question. You may have noticed that there has been a pandemic, you may not have noticed that there's been a pandemic, you may or may not have noticed that all the events, all city council events have been cancelled, right the way up to Halloween, and maybe beyond, depending upon what happens. And frankly, there's absolutely no reason why Car Free Day should be an exception to that, and one of the reasons for that is that we take a different view to it, to the Green Party. The Green Party wants a gesture of road closures, which is going to inconvenience and annoy motorists, they won't understand why, there's no education associated with it, that's what the original motion you put to council asked us to do, and that's exactly what we started to do in year one. In fact, you brought the motion in March, it was so late, we didn't have time to do any more, even if we wanted to. And then, and then, you criticised us. You criticised us for not doing enough, even though we'd done exactly what is in your motion, and that's the point at which I realised we really can't work with the Green Party on Car Free Day, because you want it both ways. You're putting a motion, we'll do exactly what you've asked us to do, and then you'll criticise, and now you're being so disingenuous as to question our commitment to Car Free Day, when let's be clear, we have permanently closed off Umtine Streets in the city centre over many, many years, permanently, not just for a day, permanently, and we're working coming out of lockdown with the county council to close them anymore. You may think that's funny, but actually, this is a Labour council taking real steps, not an empty gesture and a demonstration in front of City Hall. I mean, that is absolutely meaningless. So when you give us credit, when we do what you ask us to do, then I might listen to you.
Thank you. I'll move to question three. Councillor Neil, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Lord Mayor. Just to note that the fact that they are unpaid board members is irrelevant to their decision-making, and surprise that you would think there might be an influence if they were. Anyway, I feel you have not answered my question, so I'll ask it in another way, a little simpler. Why are you still insisting that cabinet members are seen as appropriate on the board of Norwich Generation Limited, a fully owned council company, but you have been enlightened to think it inappropriate to exclude cabinet members from the board of a proposed, fully owned council company?
Thank you. Councillor Waters?
Well, the answer I gave reflected the value of having elected members, cabinet members, in the role on NRL to represent both the interests of the council and also the interests of the company. The second thing I'd say is this, that the tone of much commentary, and I have seen a green leaflet for Thorpe Hamlet, which was conflating two completely different things, I'm checking that out, has been an attempt to suggest the maligning of council colleagues who have worked very hard on behalf of NRL, and I have to say, that has paid fruit, most recently, by a very healthy set of sales in Rain Park of properties that the council has built. Fact is, councillor Neil, the dividing line between us is not over these technical issues, it is over the fact that we are building homes, and you are resistant to the idea of that taking place, and that was clear from the last council debate that we had in June.
That is not true.
Yes, sir. Sorry, councillor Neil, you had your turn. Question four, councillor Carlo, do you have a supplementary question? Councillor Carlo? Have we got technical problems? I think you're muted at the moment.
Sorry about that, yes. Briefly again, so thank you very much councillor Harris for your thorough reply. Will you be able to share the results of the pilot with councillors, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd be... Once we start the pilot, I would be delighted to share some of the feedback that we get, that would be an absolute delight. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to question five, councillor Matthew Fulton-McAllister, do you have a supplementary question?
No supplementary, thank you.
Thank you. Question six, councillor Button, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, no supplementary, thank you.
Thank you. The questions to cabinet members. Moving to item six, adjustment to the general fund capital programme. Can we just pause there while councillors Harris, Kendrick and Maguire leave the meeting? And the director of resources. Yeah, are we there? A virtual meeting, but fully left, of course, not virtually left. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, I call upon councillor Waters to move item six.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. As all members of council will know, it has been the decision of the local authority to bring in-house on a phased basis the joint ventures with the Norse Companies. The first of those will be in spring 2021, and that will be the environmental services. So to build the infrastructure, the necessary infrastructure for that insourcing to the council, and this report is an adjustment to the general fund capital programme to provide the means by which the operation can be up and running from day one, and that includes the purchase and the refitting of a facility for the company, and that has been identified, a depot facility. So this provides the description and the funding to do that, and I very much hope it is endorsed by council colleagues.
Call upon councillor Stunard to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, formerly second reserve of rights, Steve.
Thank you. I'd like to invite group spokespersons, councillor Neil.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, being slow there. One second. The request to increase the general fund capital programme by 2.78 million is reasonable, and to enable the start-up of the proposed new council-owned environmental and repairs services company. However, there are some other concerns that the Green Group have raised before regarding its setup. The principle of bringing services back in-house was first discussed in 2018, 2021, was only brought to cabinet two weeks ago, and to be delivered in an overly ambitious time scale, which could lead to initial problems with essential operational functions. The lateness in making this decision was totally unnecessary, as there have been nearly two years to prepare. In September 2018, in an answer to a question from us, the then CEO remarked: "Work to identify a site for in-house services to be... Two months to identify a site, how confident can we be that within eight months the extensive works to secure the premises refurbish it to our needs and have it functioning in time will happen? We also recommended using this fresh start golden opportunity to bring in more environmentally friendly equipment, work practices and non-hazardous chemicals, but this will be unlikely initially because of the self-imposed short leading times. Since 2018, they have..." "...ample opportunities to have a real cross-party working group feeding into these proposals." "...supposed by strength, we're now, whether it's a proposal or not, enter need this service delivery, local knowledge of councillors and residents, and on true consultation pro..."
We've lost you, councillor Neil.
When did you lose me?
2:56, 2 minutes 56 seconds, but I understand that. You've been stopping and starting, so you want to start again? Well, not from the beginning. Okay?
I think I was saying, let the option of agreeing with administrations' proposals or not, and denied the opportunity to really improve this service delivery. We hope going forward the council would draw much more on the local knowledge of councillors and residents, and on true consultation processes around what residents actually want from these services. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Wright?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The formation of an environment and repairs company represents a significant change of direction for the council, including gives rise to the need for a depot and for the purchase of equipment that can be used by the company. Whilst this report before us today does not give anywhere near, like enough information to base a decision on if taken in isolation, it is important to note that some councillors have spent a considerable amount of time looking at this. Without going into detail, I'm satisfied, based on the working party and cabinet discussions that I was present at, that this represents value for money for the council, and that the structure of the organisation demonstrates a positive step change going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Wright. Any other councillors who indicate wish to contribute to this? Have we got Tini? Okay. Councillor Waters, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Wright for his particularly positive remarks. I mean, the context of this, as councillor Wright indicated, is a document of some 178 pages, which has been combed over by a cross-party working group, including councillors Neil and Price from the Green Group, councillor Lubbock, and I think last time it was councillor Wright who was subbing. So I remember at one of those working party meetings, that I think it was councillor Neil who did ask the question about would there be assurances around environmentally friendly materials, and the assurance was given on that. You may have forgotten councillor Neil. And in terms of the timetable for getting the depot up and running, there was a very, very detailed piece of work to demonstrate the diagram, the flowchart for being able to deliver that in the right timeframe. So moving at speed, but, you know, not with haste, moving with care and getting everything project managed effectively. And one of the reasons we're actually bringing the joint venture in is because it will be under the direct control of the city council, there'll be no intermediary, and we will be able to design the services to reflect the wishes of local communities and also of local councillors, a much more direct relationship. So councillor Neil, he's given his approval for these figures for this report, you know, the glass, you know, is tumbleweed dry, it's not even half-empty, but I have to say, I think the amount of work that's gone into preparing this, and you have both been in the room when that has happened, that should give you the assurance that we're on course for bringing in the first of the three joint ventures in a timely way, with facilities in place, so they can start on day one providing a good and strong quality service.
Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. All those against? Councillor Vivin Thomas, could you just turn your video on, please? Okay. Right, can we count the abstentions? Okay, with that, in favour? Yeah, so that's carried. Okay, thank you. Right, we'll just pause a little while, while councillors Harris, Kendrick and Maguire are brought back into the meeting. Literally, virtually. Okay. Excellent. So item seven, transforming cities fund update and match funding. I call upon councillor Stonard to move item seven.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So the recommendation is to improve an increase of £162,000 in the general fund capital programme for the years 20 to 21 and £368,000 for 21, 22. The allocation of the funds is set out in appendix one. Now, I know colleagues are familiar with transforming cities. Transforming cities was a fund set up by the government as part of its industrial strategy to play, pay for sustainable transport improvements in cities. We were very fortunate in autumn 2018 to be one of only 11, 12 cities, 11 others to be given the right to bid against a huge pot of 1.28 billion pounds. We were successful in tranche one of securing 6.1 million pounds and that's paid for a number of schemes, for example, the Beryl Bike Scheme, a number of schemes around the city since. Tranche two was always going to be the bigger pot of money. And we submitted, or county council submitted a strategic outline case for tranche two, seeking between 58 million to 131 million pounds. And they basically, that was based on a low, medium and high package of, of proposals. And we certainly believed that, that that was the sort of quantum that we ought to be looking at. Sadly, when the, the outcome of that submission became known in March, we were not one of the successful bidders and we were put into a separate group among Portsmouth and Stoke to receive a share of 117 million pounds on basically a prorata, per capita basis. We were then invited to resubmit again on a low, medium and high assumption to, against that package. And you'll see under section six, the schemes that we're looking at, the corridors that we're looking to, to improve, and also the costs of the, of the packages. I mean, the good news is that when you look at the low package, the city centres proposals, the city proposals are all in there, which is good news. Now, part of the, the process is match funding by the city council from section 106 and SIL monies, which you'll be aware of, I'm sure. And basically, we've identified from those developer contributions, we've identified in appendix one, the schemes to which they could be reasonably and appropriately applied. So this is our part, playing our part in the match funding to make all of, all of this happen. And that's what we're being asked to confirm in these, in the recommendation tonight, that increase in the general fund, as stated, and the allocation of Norwich City Council health funds detailed in appendix one. It's disappointing, colleagues, that we haven't been able to secure the funds that would enable us to be truly transformational in how we take transport, sustainable transport forward in, in the city. What we have done is to, to put in a bid which is based on the original bid, so it's a coherent package. So we went back to where, where we were. But it is really, and whilst these are all very welcome schemes, they really don't allow us to be as ambitious as we really would have liked. And that's something which is regrettable. But nonetheless, I commend this to you because they are all excellent schemes, they help improve public transport, they help encourage cycling and walking, they'll help us move more people away from reliance on, on the private car in the city and on to more sustainable forms of transport, including a cleaner fleet of, of buses, for example. So as I say, I'll commend this to you and hope you'll support it.
Thank you. Call upon councillor Stuteley to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Stonard for introducing the details of the report. The DFT Transforming Cities Fund, PROIST, as the name suggests, a revolutionary remodelling of our city's transport networks. Its aims to improve productivity and spread prosperity through investment in public and sustainable transport offered us with a prospect of 130 million pounds fantastic opportunities. Sadly though, in April, we learned Norwich is to be in up to 100 million pounds of that investment and the scaled back plans outlined in this report fit a much smaller budget. The reason for this decision remains unclear. However, following an announcement the city would lose out, Norwich North MP Chloe Smith curiously appeared to claim credit on her website. So thanks for that Chloe. When, after decades of successful collaboration, the Norwich Highways Agency Committee was expanded by Tory County Council in April, city council effectively lost its influence on transport matters that affect the whole of Norwich. Decisions on the city's highways are now made by county councils that represent rural divisions like East Detway. The shocking implementation of county, by county of emergency measures for Sir Benedict Street and Exchange Street is a perfect example of what happens. The separate Transforming Cities Committee offered city council some scope to help shape the future. I'm disappointed that a real transformation is no longer possible, but happy to support the improvements, the improvement projects in this report and match the funding requested by the council. Looking ahead, I will continue to advocate a policy set out in Labour's Green New Deal, bringing bus and rail companies into public ownership, investing in electrification of cars and buses, mitigation to ease emissions from aviation and appropriate taxation for its executives. Instead of bailing out industry's biggest polluters with millions, the government's post-nineteen, post-COVID-19 recovery should seek to finance green technologies and create millions of green, new, unionised jobs. Many projects for which we are seeking match funding today build on this Labour council's great work on walking and cycling provision. But Labour for a new Green Deal, Green New Deal will back us further, calling for ride-to-work bicycles for all low-income families and tax credits for cycling to work. This is how we transform our cities. A little disheartened, I formally second this report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite group spokespersons councillor Carlo.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The, the Green Group supports the transfer of transport funds to the county. They would have been better if the city had spent the developer money earlier. There's not much more to say about this angle, but there's a great deal to say about the transforming cities in general, starting with the closed nature of the local decision-making process. Despite our best efforts, backbench councils were excluded from contributing to or viewing the draft application. The submitted bid showed a lack of ambition over the lack, over the level of mobile shift to buses and lack of scheme prioritisation. And these were points were made to the county in the department's decision letter. And so failure to win substantial funding isn't surprising. However, modest transforming cities funding leaves Greater Norwich high and dry. How will the authorities fund a first-class public transport system for serving tens of thousands of new homes and jobs? The council prioritise delivery of the Northern Distributor Road and now the Western Link. Without first-class public transport, there is a danger that growth around Norwich will be car-dependent. The community infrastructure levy fund cupboard is bare, as most of the money to the end of 2025 has been earmarked for the Northern Distributor Road and Long Strassen bypass. A possible future, a source of future funding is some form of UK-wide pay-as-you-go drive system to replace falling revenues from fuel duty and vehicle access duty as vehicles switch to electric power. Some of the money raised from driving on the local road network could be ring-fenced for local sustainable transport. The Transport Select Committee intends starting a national debate on the different forms of road pricing and we need a local debate. Pay-as-you-go distance, pay-as-you-go driving based on distance, time of day and vehicle emissions could influence travel behaviour. A simple sympathetic scheme allowing a certain number of free miles could be designed to help low-income households dependent on, on car use and rural residents also. Locally, pay-as-you-drive could help in reversing uncontrolled traffic growth around the outskirts of Norwich and Norfolk's rising transport carbon emissions, as well as help fund alternatives to the private car. The Department for Transport is currently inviting ideas on ways to decarbonise transport. We hope that Norwich City Council will respond to the consultation and support the idea of UK-wide pay-as-you-drive and with the money raised locally, ring-fence to spend on local green transport. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lubbock?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I too was founded a great disappointment not to receive funding from the Department of Transport in March and then without any feedback as to why the submission was deficient to be asked to resubmit the bid. I believe we have been badly let down by this bidding process, which almost allows the Department for Transport to appear to be quite arbitrary in the way they allocate funding. There's no accountability to bidders. If there had been feedback from the DFT on the deficiency of the bid, then I believe an improved bid could have gone forward. I also believe that there needs to be a greater commitment and understanding of the issues by the county council. Where is the mention about health in the bid, the equality issues and tackling climate change? A more holistic strategy may be what is missing. And if the motion today for a car-free Norwich is approved, then perhaps that will be the spur to the county to formulate that more holistic approach, which may well result in, in more success with funding to transform Norwich rather than just tinkering around the edges to improve the city. However, you know, we, we can only hope for, for better times ahead and, and we will of course support the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I'd like to call on councillors who indicate would like to contribute to the debate. No? Okay. Okay. Councillor Stonard, would you like to respond?
Yes, I'd like to thank those who contributed for their thoughtful comments. I've really, nothing to add, I commend the recommendations to you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. All those against? Okay. Abstentions? Okay. That's been carried then, I think, yeah. Can you show our hands? Those in favour? Okay, it's carried. Thank you. Move to item eight, annual scrutiny committee review 2019/20. I call upon councillor Wright to move item eight.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to begin by thanking all those who've been involved in the scrutiny process this year, particularly those people outside of this council who came to offer their expertise, answer questions and help us with our deliberations. The committee's work during the last civic year was disrupted by both the general election in December and the associated month-long hiatus and the emerging coronavirus pandemic in March. This resulted in the postponement of the topic looking at young people and their wellbeing, which we had hoped to undertake outside of city hall at a venue that would have encouraged participation by young people. The local enterprise partnership, the LEP, had also been due to meet with us in March, but this was also cancelled. The committee has now invited, agreed to invite the LEP back for our September meeting. These setbacks notwithstanding, the committee undertook some important pieces of scrutiny during the year, with detailed scrutiny of the transforming cities bid and work around climate change and air quality. Groups of councillors also served on select committees outside of the main scrutiny meeting and considered antisocial behaviour, including fly-tipping and city council processes and the growth of short-term lets of homes. Unfortunately, neither of these panels has yet been able to report back. We were also delighted to welcome Lauren Green, Police and Crime Commissioner for Norfolk, Superintendent Terry Lawdon, Norfolk Constabulary, and Dr Gavin Thompson, Director of Politing Commissioning at the Office of the PCC for our September, sorry, our February meeting to question the PCC over matters relating to policing policy in Norfolk. Members of the committee used the opportunity to raise important issues for the community in Norwich and recommendations were made to consider increasing CCTV monitoring in the city and explore all avenues of collaboration between the Office of the PCC and the city council. This particular piece of scrutiny raised some important questions, including the use of racial profiling by Norfolk police, highly relevant given the Black Lives Matter motion later on in this meeting. It was therefore with some disappointment that the press coverage of our meeting with the PCC simply focused on the PCC no longer wishing to drive from West Norfolk to Wyndham every day. In December, I was able to attend the Centre for Public Scrutiny's annual scrutiny conference. The CFPs is the main body for supporting the scrutiny role of local government and back in July had provided the annual training for scrutiny committee members. The key themes at the conference were around commercial investment and governance and we heard about new guidance coming from the National Audit Office on commercial investment. It was also interesting to hear from other councils and how they do scrutiny. In Devon, they have something called spotlight reviews, very similar to our select committees but undertaken in a single day with lots of upfront work. Devon also don't look at the Cabinet Ford plan to inform the work programme, they are working a year or more out on big ticket items. In the new authority of Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole, they are better aligning the scrutiny programme with cabinet to pre-scrutinise all major ticket items and are also setting up the process for scrutiny to appoint a single member as a rapporteur to undertake member scrutiny, single member scrutiny. There are certainly options for revising the way we scrutinise in Norwich. Having said all of that, I commend this annual review to council. Thank you.
Thank you. I call upon councillor McCartney Gray to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am happy to second this scrutiny annual report. As a relatively new member of scrutiny, I would like to thank all the officers and members of the committee for their support throughout what has turned out to be a turbulent and testing year for us all. This year, our scrutiny meetings have been disrupted by general elections and COVID-19. But we have however managed to look at a number of areas, including transforming cities, as mentioned in our chair's introduction, a meeting with the Police and Crime Commissioner Lauren Green and other members of the Norfolk Constabulary, which resulted in a number of recommendations. While it is accepted, it is not always possible to see immediate outcome from the work taken by scrutiny committee. I know that over months and sometimes years, significant, important and meaningful change can happen. More than this, it is crucial for this committee to be bold and radical, excuse me, radical, to tackle the big powerful issues which affect our citizens' lives and have the courage to consider how our vital services can further be enhanced and adapted to meet the needs ahead. Looking back over time, and not just the last year, our work on food poverty, universal credit, the private rented sector, county lines and so many other areas have grown, not only highly topical, but also led to direct policy and service changes. Lord Mayor, big things sometimes have small beginnings, and the work of all the members of this committee should be applauded and recognised. I am happy to second the report and urge all members to vote for it. Thank you, Lord Mayor. And apologies if I'm shouting. I live with two very deaf people.
Not at all. You sound perfect. Thank you. I'd like to invite group spokespersons. councillor Osborne.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have to say that I was disappointed with scrutiny pretty much throughout the course of 2019. I recall in my first scrutiny meeting, which was reviewing the city council's economic strategy, discussing for, I think, well over an hour, several proposals on how to gear the economy towards decarbonisation, only to be told that everything had already been decided by Cabinet. Scrutiny committee recommendations would be noted, but so far as I know, they were never considered by Cabinet. And that meeting seemed to set the standard for the rest of the year. For example, when scrutiny considered the Transforming Cities bid, we were told by the vice-chair that we should not make any practical recommendations because the topic was to note only. I would say that scrutiny should not function as a briefing session for councillors, as it did seem to then. It exists to improve decisions and where necessary, to hold the executive to account. It should not just be a talking shop on issues that non-cabinet councillors are not meant to have any input on, apparently. And that's just a waste of the council's resources apart from anything else. I was also very disappointed that the single topic that was directly suggested by a member of the public last year, that's fly-tipping, did not seem to be made a priority by the committee. It took months for the task and finish group that was set up to consider that topic to actually meet. Requests for information from officers and for meetings with officers were not followed up on, and in the end, the work had to be postponed until this coming year. So I hope that in future, the scrutiny committee will be doing more to prioritise the topics that residents want improvement on, and councillor McCartney Gray sort of highlighted that as well. All that said, I was actually very pleased that scrutiny improved a lot in 2020, and I'm very impressed with the work that it's done since the start of this year. Councillor Wright has highlighted some of the valuable recommendations that came out of the meetings. It was much more focused, constructive and non-partisan. Though one concern that I have outstanding is that those recommendations don't get forgotten or brushed over by the Cabinet, and so I've asked for a recommendations tracker so that the scrutiny members can see what action is being taken, or at least get some response from Cabinet, and I know that that is in progress. I do want to thank councillor Wright, because a lot of the improvement that we've seen, I think, is due to his work and not always an easy task. I think that also officers, particularly the scrutiny liaison officer, have been a great beacon in difficult times. And I also want to thank councillor Sammeysey for her work as the Health overview representative, because she always did a very thorough report and was clearly committed. So overall, I hope that scrutiny will continue to maintain its focus, its independence and its constructiveness. And as I say, there's been a lot of really good work in it since the start of this year, and I hope that it will continue to prioritise the specific topics that really matter to our residents.
Thank you. Right, I'd like to call other councillors who've indicated they'd like to contribute to this. councillor Magline. councillor Waters. councillor Magline.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I'd just like to quickly shine a light on the experience of the resident who has actually suggested a topic for scrutiny, which is fly-tipping, something that a lot of residents in a lot of wards care very deeply about, because it does impact their lives. So this resident has suggested that topic for scrutiny, and I think it's a very good topic for scrutiny, and I'm glad that the scrutiny committee has taken that up as the task and finish group. However, there is much to improve on the communication that we do with the resident. He hasn't heard back for a long time. He got in contact with me then to try and ask what's going on. The idea was that the task and finish group comes and visits that residence to find out about the situation and what the concerns are and potential solution maybe even. And he hasn't heard basically ever since. In between, the vice-chair jumped in and said he would do whatever he can to make this happen and that he should be reassured. There was a meeting with a member of Cabinet on the issue, which was obviously very welcome, but again, there was no follow-up and no communication. So I think it is so important that when residents come forward and suggest topics, that we keep them in the loop and we make sure we give the topics they raise a priority and really kind of update them on the process that we're going through. That's just what I wanted to highlight quickly.
councillor Waters.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. It's really in response to councillor Osborne. The process is that the chair of scrutiny, who comes to Cabinet meetings in his own right as a group leader, but also as chair of scrutiny, will bring forwards the recommendations that the scrutiny committee has made, and those are listed in the papers and they are minuted. And Cabinet values what scrutiny does, not least because scrutiny is able to look in detail at particular issues that do require investigation, sometimes a working group to look at them in particular depth. And so that strand of scrutiny's work, which is to help shape policy alongside investigating performance of particular service areas, is extremely valuable. And councillor Osborne will also know that there is a regular attendance by Cabinet members at scrutiny meetings when items come forward. And I do recall that when the city council's economy strategy came forward, that's my portfolio area, I came to answer questions and pick up issues alongside the relevant officers. So I wouldn't want the viewing public to get the impression that there is no positive interaction between the scrutiny function, which sets its own work programme, and the Cabinet, the executive part of the system. There's a good deal of beneficial collaboration.
Thank you. councillor Stuteley.
Thank you. Just in response to the fly-tipping issue, I would like to see a report on fly-tipping, and it's a wider issue of reporting, actually, in street issues and other things that go on in our communities. But just because we don't have a report doesn't mean we don't prioritise those issues in our wards. It's a big, it's a major concern in town close, for example. And we try and encourage our residents to report fly-tipping, and we go out and investigate issues ourselves. Just recently, I reported about eighty separate piles of fly-tipping in the area across twenty forms just in one day, and most of those were cleared within days. So the system actually works. But in the future, I would like to see some scrutiny of this issue. But we can continue to work hard to inform our residents as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors which indicate? No? Okay. councillor Wright, would you like to respond?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank all councillors who've contributed to the debate, and thank you very much to councillor McCartney Gray for highlighting the issues that the scrutiny committee's looked at over the years and reminding us of some of those. Food poverty, of course, was a significant piece of work that we'll be talking about later on during this meeting. For councillor Osborne, thank you very much for your constructive comments about the way that scrutiny operates. You might not have had a chance to see it yet, but that recommendation tracker that you had requested at Thursday's meeting of scrutiny was emailed out. It just had to help us five this afternoon. So that is now available for councillors. Just like to pick up also, thank councillor Sammeysey for the work on ENHOSK. It's been really good to get very detailed feedback from that meeting every time that's happened. And yes, everyone who's talked about fly-tipping, we will continue that piece of select committee work, rest assured. So and we'll report back when that's complete. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. All those against? Okay. Sorry, what did you do? Did you say we've got one there? And abstentions? Okay, those in favour? Okay, that's carried. Thank you very much. Move to item nine. Annual audit, the annual report of the Audit Committee 2019 to 20. I call upon councillor Price to move item nine.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As the Chair of the Audit Committee, it is my duty to present its annual report to council in accordance with the Accounts and Audit Regulations 2015. The document details much of the work undertaken by the committee across the 1920 cycle. Both myself and vice-chair councillor Driver have contributed to the reduction of this report, and the Audit Committee considered the report at our meeting earlier this month. It has been a challenging year for the committee, because we reflect the challenges that the organisation faces regarding the increased exposure to risk that our commercial activity generates and the reduction in resources available to the council due to the cuts in the central government grants. As a committee, we are charged with considering, reviewing and making recommendations in regards of corporate governance, internal and external audit, the statement of accounts and risk management. The committee considers the internal audit plan and makes recommendations regarding areas that we would like to be investigated. We also consider if enough days are allocated to the officers in order to deliver the plan. The plan and number of days allocated to it are agreed at a meeting of internal audit officers and the CLT. The committee does not set the number of days allocated or the areas for investigation. At the March meeting, we considered the internal audit plan for 2021. We looked at the number of days allocated to this task by comparable councils, and the committee was satisfied with the number we had selected to investigate all areas on the plan, including key financial systems. The committee welcomed the additional days allocated for extra consultancy in reference to the return of the joint ventures. I personally welcome that the plan will provide advice and consultancy work on commercial property investment, which both myself and the CLT wish to see. I also welcome that assurance of work around Norwich Regeneration Limited, the council's wholly-owned company, will also take place. This work will consist of reviewing the suite of assurances required by the council to ensure governance arrangements are effective and proportionate to ensure the council's objectives are achieved and interests protected. I have to question why this essential work has taken so long to happen, and I hope the investigation is thorough and that the assurance we arrive at is not solely based on the work of the company's own internal auditors and the director's statements. The committee will pay close attention to the outcomes of this investigation. Risk management is another area I have asked for greater focus on in the 2021 cycle. The needs to be more strongly embedded, this needs to be more strongly embedded into the culture of the council. The risk register needs remodelling, and the management needs to own and control the identified risks more robustly. I'm pleased to see that this work will be undertaken. The risk appetite of this council is not the concern of the Audit Committee. The risk appetite is set by the leadership. The Audit Committee must be satisfied that the council's risk appetite is controlled and mitigated by the policies that the council has in place. That is why the work we will undertake regarding the council's policy framework and the review procedures of our policies is essential, and I very much welcome that this work will be undertaken by internal audit during the 2021 cycle. The council needs assurance that this keystone, the policy framework, is robust and fit for purpose. Otherwise, this house of cards built on massive public borrowing could be at undue risk of tumbling down. During last year's cycle, we also considered the audit plan from our external auditors, Ernst Young, who reviewed the statement of accounts and the council's internal control systems. We questioned about the areas they will focus on, gathering insight into the systems and procedures they use to perform their checks. Much of the committee's focus is on the large-risk areas where controls could be overridden by management and also the value-for-money work around commercialisation. The work of external audit is absolutely essential to the council gaining a satisfactory assurance that it has the correct policies and mechanisms in place to mitigate risks that the commercialisation programme bestows upon the council and that it can meet its financial commitments. The external auditors have requested that the council increases its payments to them due to changes in government legislation and the subsequent additional work they must undertake to provide the council with an assurance. The committee was minded to write to the Secretary of State for Housing Communities and Local Government to oppose these possible fee increases, a letter which will now be sent in this cycle. I personally feel that the external auditors have been let down by the PSAA with regard to fee setting, leaving external auditors and Section 151 officers in a difficult negotiation position. The committee reviews and approves the statement of accounts and the associated annual governance statement. In this cycle, I've made it my focus to improve the annual governance statement, making sure that the action points from the previous cycle are properly identified and that the committee receives adequate reporting back on previous agreed outcomes. It is important to note that our finance team are under considerable pressure to produce the statement of accounts within very tight deadlines, which they have consistently done throughout my time on the committee, and I'm sure the committee shares my thanks to them for their diligent work on the council's behalf. It is worth noting that the cancellation of the agreement with LGSS to deliver internal audit on behalf of the council will have had some impact on the final delivery of last year's audit plan and the subsequent transition into the 2021 cycle. This has been compounded by the impacts of the pandemic, with the lockdown being introduced at the tail end of the last cycle. A proportion of internal audit's resource last year was used in developing the skills and knowledge of staff members that have chuped over to the council. This resulted in more audit days being delivered than were scheduled for. The costs of this absorbed by LGSS, and we are thankful for their support and training of our staff members. We do have some experienced councillors on the Audit Committee, which I am most grateful for, but in the last cycle, I made it a focus of mine to improve the ability of the committee by trying to develop a training programme for members, so they were more empowered with the knowledge and confidence to carry out the duties of the committee. We did have some limited success, but I do feel that this is an area we need to focus on again. There are a number of external courses available to members, which I would encourage them to sign up to. The council has a new chief executive in Stephen Evans, who I've met with in my capacity as the Audit Chair. We have had a positive and frank discussions about my concerns regarding some aspects of the functions carried out by the Audit Committee. With his previous experience in the Treasury and the additional controls he has already implemented at the council, I am confident in that his approach will benefit the work of the Audit Committee, allowing it to be that critical friend of the council that has not always been allowed to do. I look forward to working with him across the 2021 cycle. I also welcome the appointment of the new interim Audit Manager, Gavin Jones. We have had initial productive meetings, and he has identified the same areas of concern that I have around the policy framework, risk management and the outstanding action points from the 1920 cycle work on contract management, and also the long overdue action points from the 1819 cycle resulting from the work into NRL. On a personal level, I feel that I have grown and improved during my three years in this role. I would like to thank the leader of the council, councillor Alan Waters, for his support and guidance in improving my abilities as Chair during the last year. I am confident that I now have the right balance of skills and knowledge a Chair of the Audit Committee should possess in order to provide a considered approach to the key role of challenging the governance and financial reporting that our authority undertakes on behalf of the whole council, and more importantly, on behalf of the residents of Norwich. I would like to say thank you to all the officers at Norwich City Council, including members of the CLT, who have supported the committee during the 1920 cycle. Thanks also to our external audit team from Ernst Young, and also a note of thanks to the now-departed internal audit officers from LGSS. I would like to thank all the members of the committee for their hard work, and also councillor Kendrick, the Cabinet Member for Resources, for his continued commitment to the Audit Committee, and a special thanks to Jackie Roger, whose dedication and support of the committee is invaluable. I recommend the report to the council.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Driver to second the item.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank councillor Price? I think he was a very good Chair this year. I was a bit worried about his speech at the end there. I thought he was about to resign, but the way he was talking, so I'm glad he's not. I'd just like to say the Audit Committee this year, it's gone through all the accounts, and I think what we ought to do is actually praise the city council for the way they're actually done their accounts, and try not to lose any frontline staff. I think we're getting to the point where the government is not actually paying us any money anymore at all. So we've got to start finding money from money streams, and I know councillor Price is a bit worried with our buildings, what we keep buying, but he's just bringing money into the city council. We have looked into this on audit, and found there to be no reason to be concerned at the moment for this, and I think it's all working well. But I think we need to thank the city council as a whole for all their accounts, what they go through during the year. All departments seem to be doing well. They're making cuts for us to spend money on frontline services and this. And the only thing I really worry about is how our external auditors can suddenly put our price up for the whole year, nearly double it, halfway through a contract, and I'm really disappointed that they're being allowed to get away with this. And that's why you wrote the letter, councillor Price. But apart from that, I'd just like to thank all the members. We have been on training courses to London and in Cambridge, which is very informal, and they do help us in all the committee. And Anton, who's there as well, really looks after us as committee members. So I'd like to second the report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite group spokespersons. Councillor Wright.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to take the opportunity to thank councillor Price as Chair and councillor Driver as Vice Chair for their work during the year. The Audit Committee carries out a vital function on behalf of members of the council, and through oversight of the internal audit plan is able to ensure that council activities are regularly monitored. The committee devoted significant time to the audit of the council's external activities, in particular Norwich Regeneration Limited. I would like to commend the format of the working party referred to in paragraph 28. The Chair, Vice Chair, and myself met to agree a response to the independent review into arrangements in place to support the transparency and quality of local financial reporting in external audit in England, trips right off the tongue, which is why it's more commonly known as the Redman Review. This was an important piece of information gathering by central government, which the council was able to feed into, and the format of close collegiate working enabled the council to put forward a timely response to this important review, and demonstrates the importance of working parties in supplementing the work of main committees. That is actually what I'm going to say on this report, echo everything that both the Chair and the Vice Chair have already said. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call on councillors who've indicated they want to contribute. Councillor Stuteley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to highlight the work of officers, actually, who ensure the committee is well informed at all times. After 10 years of Tory and Lib Dem sanctioned cuts over the period, that we're in a favourable position compared with any other councils, and I think we're in good hands going forward. I'd like to thank everyone involved so far.
Thank you. Any other councillors who wish to contribute? No? Okay. Well, councillor Price, would you like to respond?
Yes, briefly, Lord Mayor. Thank you for everyone for listening to that speech. And yes, I just want to just say that councillor Driver, you know, thank you for your kind words. And yes, I mean, just around our buildings and investments, my personal opinion does not come into it in my role as the Chair of Audit. All I am there is to make sure that we have the robust systems in place to mitigate those risks. And it is a risk area that we have focused on, and I appreciate all the work of the committee in that area. And to return to councillor Wright as well, that showed good cohesive work across the three parties representing this council in order to inform that review, and it shows how well we can work as a committee. So I commend the report to the council here, and thank everyone for their help. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to a vote. All those against? Okay. And abstentions? Thank you. All those in favour? Okay, that's carried. Thank you very much. Moving to item 10A. I call upon councillor Lubbock to move motion 10A.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Covid-19 and the lockdown has had devastating effect on our lives and our economy. It has also shone a spotlight on social inequality. Diseases of poverty such as obesity and diabetes increasing the likelihood of death from the coronavirus. But Covid-19 has also delivered unusual environmental benefits of cleaner air, quieter streets, and it has given us an opportunity to take stock and think differently about where we live and how we live. The quieter streets have encouraged more walking and cycling, and more people exercising in the cleaner air. This has given us an opportunity to envisage a different future, an opportunity to accelerate those changes we experienced, such as cleaner air and quieter roads, a chance to address those health and poverty inequalities, and a chance to reduce the 36,000 deaths a year due to air pollution. All of this is possible if we had less cars and slower cars on our roads. I think the time is right for change, to build back better, as the government slogan goes. They have given emergency funding to encourage active travel, to keep people safe while social distancing and travelling around the city. They have allowed the temporary closure of streets and pop-up cycle lanes. And the government's support for bus services throughout the pandemic has been a lifeline, but also a show of commitment to public transport. So for once, we have the government giving the right incentives for walking and cycling in the fight against Covid, because it keeps people healthy in body and mind, and increases resilience against infectious disease. And they in turn help protect the NHS while Covid remains very much a part of our daily lives. In an article in The Times yesterday, a four million pound project pilot scheme was announced prescribing exercise classes, nature walks, and cycling, known as green prescriptions. This was to help ease the pressure on the NHS. And one doctor was quoted, 'There is no drug in the world that is proven to help so many conditions, both mental and physical, as well as exercise does. There is no chemical as powerful in bringing happiness as social contact.' What a powerful endorsement of what we are hoping to achieve through this motion. The county have used the first tranche of the government's emergency funding to close Exchange Street and St Benedict's, and with the second tranche coming in August, other street closures will follow. Consultation with the public to see what can be improved with the schemes will hopefully lead to the temporary closures being made permanent. But road closures to traffic is nothing new to the city. Since 1967 and the pedestrianisation of London Street, Norwich has been steadily transforming the public realm to accommodate pedestrians and cyclists. The pedestrianisation of Gentleman's Walk, the exclusion of cars from Castle Meadow and St Stephens, the creation of the Forum Space, and more recently, Wesselgate and All Saints Green. We have three fine examples of pedestrian bridges, the Novi Sad, the Lady Julian, and the Gerald's Bridge. The city is surrounded by six park and ride sites, with another proposed at Trous. So we start from a very solid base of changes to the public realm in favour of sustainable transport. But in general, for 50 years, transport policy has been orientated towards the movement of cars. More recently, European and British cities are seeing the benefits of an alternative, such as prioritising public transport, including the reintroduction of the tram. York, Brighton, Bristol, Cardiff, Oxford, and Birmingham, amongst other cities, will in the next few years, in some form or another, exclude unnecessary cars from their city centres. Norwich could be just one of many cities tackling difficult but necessary changes. One of the most difficult changes for this council is the council-owned car parks, and finding an alternative use but still keeping an income stream to fund essential services. Although the reduction of cars in the city encapsulates issues of health and climate change, it is also about social justice. It is worth considering that a car driver's right to drive where he wants, when he wants, and often at the speed that he wants, directly impinges on the rights of another to cycle on the road where and when they want. He is intimidated from cycling by the driver by feeling unsafe, mainly because of the speed at which that driver travels. Why should one person's wish to travel by car trump another's wish to travel by bike? More people will cycle if they feel safe doing so, and reducing vehicle speeds and having safer spaces to cycle is the key. If approved this evening, it is for Cabinet to start work with their partners from the Norwich 2020 Vision, and in particular, the County Council. I am prepared to pay my part in lobbying support from the County Council. The city is comprised of many businesses, homes, and essential services, which all need servicing, so there will always be access to them at some time and in some part. And that would also apply to those with mobility problems who are otherwise unable to use public transport. So please back the motion, and together as a council, we can show real leadership on these so very important fundamental issues of cleaner air, safer streets, and a better quality of life. Norwich could emerge from this crisis to create a more inclusive and sustainable city. I hope members are up for the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Price to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Greens have been working towards reducing the negative impacts on health and the environment caused by motor vehicles in the city for a number of years. We welcome this timely motion from the Liberal Democrat Group, which I'm very happy to second. The Green Group is disappointed with the lack of creative forward thinking the council's Covid recovery plan has so far outlined in reimagining transport in our city. Road closures have been haphazard, with no real proposals for maintaining the welcome fall in car numbers. This is the time to show real leadership, helping to create a healthier and safer place for both residents and visitors. Councillors are likely to be aware of media reports giving evidence that shows high levels of some air pollutants are linked to higher numbers of Covid-19 cases. We need to do more to reduce the risk. A number of car-free city centres are either in development or have already been successfully introduced elsewhere, notably Ghent in Belgium. Ghent zoned its residential roads and banned cars travelling through the city centre. This led to large increases in cycling, a 35% decrease in accidents, and an 18% decrease in air pollution whilst maintaining competitive retail outcomes compared to other cities in the country. Decisive change requires bold and enlightened leadership. Leadership the Greens are ready to show if called upon by voters. My motion to council in March 2019 committed this council's support to the International Car Free Day in perpetuity. However, I have been disappointed by the lack of action from the Labour administration, like their failure to close any city centre roads last year, or to engage meaningfully with businesses. We need more than hollow words of endorsement. Greens have advocated for a number of years that council needs to wean itself off its dependency on car parking income, something that the administration has ignored. This spluttering income stream is likely to continue to decrease. Until the administration confronts this problem through its commercial strategy, I fear they have tied Norwich to the combustion engine, choking our economic development and our citizens. A key element of today's motion is to restrict the use of motor vehicles outside schools, something I've previously called for. We are all aware that pollution from motor vehicles negatively impacts the lung and brain development of children. When I walk my children to school, the air quality is terrible. It makes me very sad and angry that so little is being done to address these health issues, even though they have been acknowledged for so long. It's a shame the city council didn't take more action when it had control over roads within its boundaries. It must now work forcibly with partners, using its influence by lobbying the County Council for change. At the very least, it can make a statement today by supporting the health and wellbeing of Norwich residents and voting for this motion, helping to take a step towards cleaning up our city and our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite group spokespersons now. Councillor Stunard.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The first thing I'd like to say is that we welcome this motion, which is in keeping with our direction of travel over many years, and certainly doesn't depart from that continuing direction of travel to continue removing unnecessary car journeys from the city. So I'd like to thank councillor Lubbock for bringing this important motion to us today. And as she said, we have, as a councillor, a proud record of managing city centre traffic in this way. Since 1969, we progressively pedestrianised the city centre and taken out through traffic, creating a safer, more pleasant environment, and a better experience for visitors, and helping to create the success story that Norwich City Centre has been over many decades. And indeed, up until lockdown on the 23rd of March, Norwich City Centre was vibrant and thriving. And we need to maintain this gradual removal of the private car, although it's sad that since the demise of Norwich Highways Agency, the county has taken back control of the powers. Post-Covid, as we head towards post-Covid, we're not there yet, we have the challenge of reopening the city as safely as possible, and understanding what the so-called new normal will be in the context of changing attitudes and behaviours. For example, the increase in online shopping we've seen, which is seen to be safer, a lower usage of public transport because people don't feel safe, restrictions on the entertainment and hospitality sectors, which are vital to the city centre economy, and more walking and cycling, and more homeworking, and so on. Lots of different changes there, and it's too early, I argue, to be clear about the significance and longevity of any individual changes, or how they might all interact together. But we can anticipate that the post-Covid world will be very different, and we have now the opportunity, as being said, to build on these trends, whether they are positive, in particular encouraging more walking and cycling, as we have consistently, and also ensuring an improvement in air quality. We also need to think about encouraging people back to public transport, safely of course. We also need to remember that we want to maintain the vibrancy and success of the city centre, and the businesses, and the people who work for the people who work there, be they retail, hospitality, or entertainment. This is about protecting those offerings, those things which make Norwich such a special place, which we all love so much. Now, the work we're doing with the County Council to open up the city centre again, road closures, wider pavements, allowing tables and chairs, et cetera, whilst not perfect, and I would echo comments which have been made about the management of some of those issues by the County Council. But that is all part of this work, to try and achieve, hopefully, longer term road closures, and a much more pedestrian and cycle friendly city. Our recovery plan Our recovery plan sets out our commitment to do this in partnership with the public and our many city partners. That's really, really important that we do it in partnership. The City's Twenty Forty Vision initiative involves a very diverse range of interests and views, and it's our key mechanism for planning the city's strategic future. The Liverpool City strand of that is all about the city taking a pride in being a place where there's a great local environment and creating efficient, good quality, low emission and affordable transport options. The proposals in this motion are strategic and they have many implications which need to be understood and thought through. For example, the entire Transport Network will need to be redesigned and there will need to be significant investments in supporting transport infrastructure, including in much more, much cleaner public transport, increasing park and ride capacity and so on, none of which now, of course, are our responsibilities. So we would need to lobby. There are also implications for some key retail and other businesses. As mentioned, it's been made of the city council's six million pounds a year income from car parking. But within the city walls, we've got the forum whose business model relies on car parking income. We need to take that into account. We need to manage the transition and protect those businesses. I could say the same of into Chapelfield, Carport and indeed John Lewis. So we need to be very careful about how we implement. We need to understand the knock-on effect for not just those businesses, but for the people who work for them. We need to understand the impact for access and talk to the access group and understand their concerns and make sure they're taken into account. So the place for that consideration strategically, if this is going to be successful, is the Liverpool City strand of the Twenty Forty Vision, which is due this coming autumn. That will make sure the ideas in this proposal receive proper consideration, come to fruition. That's where it needs to be directed into the mainstream of our work. So for that reason, therefore, Lord Mayor, I propose under Part Fifty-Two K of Appendix One of the council's constitution to defer debate on the motion until the work around the Liverpool City as part of the Twenty Forty City Vision work takes place, which will be this autumn. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a second for that. Councillor Waters, seconded. Thank you. We'll move directly to a vote on whether to defer the motion. All those against? With that? Okay, abstentions? All those in favour? Okay, thank you. The majority voting in favour of a deferral, the motion has been deferred until the work around the Liverpool City as part of the Twenty Forty City Vision work takes place. We'll now move on to item ten B. Motion ten B, food poverty. I call upon councillor Davis to move motion ten B.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Since March, town closed Labour councillors in conjunction with NR2 Community Skillshare, the Adat Yeshua Synagogue and the NR2 Covid Response Group, have been running an emergency food bank, which has been serving NR2, parts of NR1 and NR4. On one day alone, we served a hundred and fifty people in an hour. This was at the peak of people waiting for UC to be paid. Most of the people we see have never used a food bank before, and the shame associated with having to ask for help to feed themselves and their families is apparent. Many of these people found themselves unemployed for the first time, were self-employed and were working zero-hours contracts. They did not receive money through the furlough scheme, as their employers claimed they were self-employed. They then found out they were not eligible for help through the self-employment scheme either, as they were actually employed. Some people became eligible for free school meals for the first time, only to be humiliated in supermarkets when the Eden Red voucher scheme failed at the checkout. Some have long-term illnesses and have been waiting for months for PIP. Some just didn't have enough money to go round with children at home and high private rents. Others were still having money taken from their UC at source for crisis loans taken out pre-lockdown. We've been working with the people, we've been helping access food, to also access support with many different problems, be it social services, debt, access to education, financial inclusion, benefits, housing, coercive control and addiction services, to name but a few. All of the volunteers have worked tirelessly and continue to do so as we face the arrival of the school holidays. Many families will have become eligible for free school meals during the holidays since lockdown, but the government sets a time limit on applications, with the last applications being accepted one week before the schools closed. There is no contingency plan for parents or carers who lose their jobs during the school holidays and would become eligible for support. Thanks to a decade of austerity, it once again falls to the underfunded voluntary sector to make sure people are supported through this crisis. The DWP has reintroduced sanctioning. Theresa Coffey said it was important for claimants to commit to look for work and attend appointments at jobs as job centres started to reopen from July the first. But what jobs do they expect people to apply for? According to the Office for National Statistics, job vacancies have fallen to their lowest level on record and inflation-adjusted pay declined for the first time in April since January twenty eighteen. The number of people out of work and claiming work-related benefits in the UK jumped twenty-three percent in May as the coronavirus crisis forced thousands of businesses to close. More bad news could be just around the corner as furlough turns to redundancies as the scheme is phased out. Nine point one million people are currently furloughed. A quarter of businesses have said they will struggle to pay anything towards workers' pay come August. Highlighting the impact of the pandemic on the workforce, the latest figures from May found the number of job centre claimants increased from one point two four million in March to two point eight million, representing a hundred and twenty-six percent increase since the beginning of lockdown. The year-on-year increase in claimant unemployment was the highest ever recorded, the Institution for Employment Studies said, and went beyond the one billion increase in claimants seen in the first year following the nineteen twenty-nine Wall Street crash. Norwich Job Centre Plus has over twenty-four and a half thousand UC claimants as of last Thursday. How can it possibly be right to sanction people for not getting jobs that don't exist? The fact is that sanctions were never effective in helping people find jobs. It's a counterproductive and cruel policy that punishes claimants when the social security system should be there to help people. There are some immediate and very easily achievable changes the government can make to alleviate poverty and kick-start the economy. These would allow people choice, dignity and lessen the long-term need for food banks. They are simple. Firstly, instead of providing some parents with a fifteen-pound voucher per child, which can only be spent at set supermarkets, put an extra fifteen pounds on child benefit per child per week for everyone. Many parents fall into the just-about-managing category, where their income is slightly above the cut-off point but have very high outgoings. People would have the choice to shop locally or online, something which is not currently available within the Eden Red voucher scheme. Online shopping is a lifeline for parents with disabilities or those living in rural areas with little public transport. A fifteen quid Tesco voucher is of little use if your new shop is twenty miles away, and we will not stimulate the local economy by putting the money into the pockets of supermarket shareholders. The second change they should be implementing is a universal basic income. People often find reasons not to support UBI, such as why should rich people get free money? But the fact is, it's universal. You have to be earning under sixteen thousand pounds a year to use A and E. There is no difference. This needs to go hand-in-hand with a progressive system of taxation. The UK government has generally justified its policy of corporate tax cuts by the ideology of competitiveness. But the idea that cutting taxes stimulates economic activity, leading to greater tax receipts, is demonstrably wrong. By the government's own estimation, the increase in tax collection generated by the economic growth stimulated by tax cuts will mean that the Treasury will only recoup around half the tax losses that it has incurred through corporate tax cuts over the next twenty years. There are many advantages to paying a UBI. It supports unemployed workers and business in a time of crisis. In response to coronavirus with economies shutting down, a UBI is optimal response for dealing with widespread unemployment and a fall in income. Means-tested benefits are becoming increasingly complex and cumbersome. There are costs in both finance and time for people to apply and receive benefits. Efficiency savings for abolishing the bureaucracy behind means-tested benefits would enable more money to be spent on actual benefits. Increasingly, flexible labour markets make conventional benefits more limited. Modern labour markets have seen a rise in self-employment, flexible hours and zero contracts. This means that people can end up receiving very low income in certain months and not be eligible for any work-related or unemployment benefits because they are not classed as unemployed or in normal employment. A UBI would also prevent people from slipping through the gaps. There may be time delays in receiving benefits. Some people may become homeless because of delays in receiving benefits. A UBI will prevent these gaps and help to reduce temporary cash flow crises, which could have adverse long-term effects. It reduces the need for the government's controversial current tests and sanctions related to evidence of work search activity. The Trussell Trust, the UK's biggest food bank network, said it gave out eighty-nine percent more food parcels in April compared to the same month last year, while the Independent Food Aid Network recorded a one hundred and seventy-five increase over the same period. The number of families with children who received food parcels almost doubled in April compared to the same period last year, the Trussell Trust said. A rise it described as unprecedented. No parent wants to depend on charity to feed their own child, but it's clear that food banks are becoming the only option for a growing number of families whose finances have all but collapsed because of Covid-19. Struggle is turning to real hardship. Food bank figures paint a grim picture of what is unfolding across the UK and the numbers of people having to resort to emergency food to survive. But solution to the escalating food insecurity crisis has never been the provision of charitable food aid. Everyone needs to be able to afford to buy food and bear essentials. Lord Mayor, the last fifteen weeks have been some of the hardest, most exhausting and stretching as the food bank I helped to set up as a councillor provides a daily basic support and help to some of the most vulnerable in our community. It has revealed ever more, if it ever needed to be, the caustic, degrading, searing poverty, the insecurity and fear that runs so deep through such an ever-growing part of our community. This community is set to grow. We all know this. It will contain our loved ones, friends, family members, work colleagues and neighbours as more and more people lose their livelihoods and are sometimes forced to use charity in the absence of the support they should be entitled to. The lessons for me are clear. We need not only a functioning and strong social security system, but also the chance to be bold and pilot new ways of redistributing wealth to ensure no one is left behind. UBI offers us that potential. I hope this motion will receive cross-party support tonight. We all want to fight for a fairer city for the people of Norwich. On this matter, I'm sure there's no division in the chamber. Please support this motion tonight. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Davis. Councillor Jones to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Whilst I'm incredibly proud of the residents of Norwich for the ways the communities have come together during the Covid crisis to support one another with community food banks providing the essentials for so many residents, I have to admit I find the need also highly troubling. I really struggle to accept that food banks have needed to become part of everyday life in our fine city. Every supermarket has a collection box, and don't get me wrong, I'd encourage anyone who can to donate. But fresh out of university fifteen years ago, I worked at a drop-in centre for the homeless and for people who are vulnerably housed. We did also provide food parcels, but requests are a rarity, maybe one or two a month at most. In contrast, today, one of the largest supermarkets in the country is using food bank donations as a TV advertising opportunity. This is so, so wrong. We need to switch the focus to the root causes, and Covid has brought even more into view the failings and cruelty of the social security system. Now, as a mental health nurse, I see far too often that poverty is both the cause of extreme mental distress and also the consequence for those with long-term conditions, having to navigate DWP, PIP assessments, universal credit, tribunals and appeals processes. There are far too many stumbling blocks placed in their way, which even those with the best mental health would find challenging. But those with long-term illnesses are far more likely to fall off the path and left with nothing by a system set up to deter them. We have all seen those news stories of individuals with long-term mental or physical health conditions who die without money to feed themselves or heat their homes. This government should be embarrassed that in twenty twenty in Britain, the most vulnerable can be left to starve. The social isolation that has been needed to control Covid has been testing for many of us. As social beings, it has taken all our resilience to manage the effects on our mental wellbeing. But it will be tested so much more for many in the coming months and in some cases push them to crisis, as furlong comes to an end and companies lay off staff, as we're already seeing in retail and hospitality sectors. It takes little imagination to predict the devastating impact on mental health when a regular income goes and the sums no longer add up to pay the mortgage or rent bills and buy food. These are not things that... People just should be able to take it for granted they should afford these. But with precisely nothing in their pocket and excessive weight for UC, this sadly can lead to despair and crisis. If we really care about our city, fighting for all to have the means to feed and house themselves adequately is both a moral responsibility but also financially prudent, as poverty clearly has a significant and long-lasting impact on both mental and physical health. We must fight to banish this system predicated on the misnomer of deserving and undeserving, more in place in a Dickensian novel. So both as a city councillor and a mental health nurse, I ask you to support this motion. There are far too many other factors that cause mental illness. If we can mitigate just one through the trial of a universal basic income and these other measures, surely that's something we can all get behind and support. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to invite group spokespersons now. Councillor Schmier.
Yes, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And thank you very much to councillors Davis and Jones for bringing this timely motion, as we have heard. In terms of our own background, we welcome this motion and look forward to supporting it. Indeed, last year, a study found that more than four million people in the UK are trapped in deep poverty and a further ten million or so were classified as living in poverty as well. And that's before Covid. Indeed, the result is that too many people are reliant on the goodwill and altruism of strangers who volunteer in food banks and work with other support groups simply to make ends meet and feed themselves and their family. Now, these organisations provide an invaluable lifeline to those in the greatest need in Norwich and elsewhere in the United Kingdom. And it is only right that the people who have volunteered and supported these endeavours receive the credit and applause that this motion bestows on them. But it's also right that we highlight the ongoing travesty, namely that in the twenty-first century, people in Britain are still reliant on food banks and the generosity of individuals and shops, as well as the dedication of volunteers simply to put food on the table. This is nothing short of a social scandal that is sadly worsening and set to be exacerbated in the weeks and months to come. Now, as councillor Davis has already highlighted, food banks operated by the Trussell Trust, that is the largest food bank network in the United Kingdom, have reported their busiest months ever, as thousands of men, women and children have found themselves on the brink of destitution and have been forced to seek emergency food simply to survive. We've already heard the figures, and this is sadly simply part of a longer-term trend exacerbated by the coronavirus crisis. Now, in two thousand and ten, the Trussell Trust handed out forty-one thousand food parcels. By twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, that number had jumped up to one point two million people. And the estimate was that about six hundred thousand different people used its services. This is getting worse. And, Lord Mayor, Norwich is sadly not immune from these social ills, as the number of people claiming universal credit here has risen and more than doubled between March twenty nineteen and March this year, from three thousand to more than seven thousand two hundred. And while Norwich may be blessed by having the organisations that seek to offset this, the Norwich Food Bank, the Food Hub, the FEED, as well as other countless acts of kindness from mutual aid groups and neighbours helping each other out. But fundamentally, to deal with this problem, we need a structural change to improve the wellbeing of our residents. And the link between poverty and negative outcomes has long been proven and but yet seems to keep getting exacerbated. Indeed, last year, the special rapporteur on extreme poverty, Philip Alston, said, and I quote, "ideological cuts to public services have led to", in his words, "tragic consequences". So what are we to do? Well, if we are to tackle the scourge- Well, if we are to tackle the scourge of extreme poverty, we need radical solutions. And I am delighted that this motion has come at the same time that a universal basic income motion is being put forward. And indeed, this motion itself calls for Norwich to be a pilot area for the implementation of UBI. The Chancellor has clearly shown that there is money to spend to prop up the economy. But we can't go back to the way things were with all its fundamental inequities. The coronavirus has given us perhaps a once-in-a-century opportunity to hit the reset button on the way our social economic structures are built. It is an opportunity to do something truly radical, truly remarkable, but also truly simple, to eradicate poverty. There is simply no justification why someone in twenty twenty should live in such poverty that they go hungry. And it is not too much to ask of the government that each and every one of us be treated with dignity and compassion. No one should ever be left behind. And so I am delighted that this motion has been put forward and look forward to supporting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I call on councillor Wright.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to begin by thanking councillors Davis and Jones for bringing this important motion and to add my voice to the thanks to those volunteers, groups and organisations who have been working to support and provide support across the city. In preparing for this motion, I was reminded about the important piece of work that the scrutiny committee carried out in relation to food poverty back in two thousand and seventeen. Back then, we used two meetings to take evidence from a range of experts into the causes of food poverty in Norwich. I found the recorded testimony of some of those reliant on food banks particularly powerful. The committee was able to hear the audio supplied by Norwich Food Bank, which gave an especially human dimension to the situation they face. These fellow citizens went from being nameless case studies on paper to real people that the committee could empathise with. Back then, Norwich City Council had no specific strategy to help its citizens in food poverty. And the committee made a number of recommendations to Cabinet around the development of a strategy, increased awareness and availability of financial advice and early intervention, and the development of community-led food literacy projects and other recommendations. It might be helpful for the scrutiny committee to receive an update as to the progress of those recommendations by Cabinet to input into our current work. I'd like to focus specifically on child poverty and the issues that have been facing parents unable to feed their children. During the early part of lockdown, I saw firsthand the desperation of parents who were unable to feed their children properly. Free school meals had stopped, but the government's hastily appointed contractor was not up to the task, leading schools to feed those most in need. On May the seventh, The Guardian reported that a two-hundred-and-thirty-four million pounds contract was awarded to Edenred without competitive tender and that the company were woeful in their preparation. This was certainly my experience on the ground. I witnessed parents contacting schools in desperation at lack of voucher codes and heard stories of where the vouchers simply didn't work in shops, leading to embarrassment. Despite many of us calling for the scheme to be extended into school holidays and councillor Bojek Colton and myself were both signatories of the National Education Union letter to the Secretary of State for Education back in May, it took an intervention from footballer Marcus Rashford in June before the government changed its tune. As we meet today on what for many was the last day of the school year, another spectre haunts families living on the breadline, the prospect of imminent unemployment. This is because children of parents who lose their job over the coming weeks risk missing out on free school meals because of a loophole in the scheme. The current government guidelines say you must apply for a voucher for the Covid summer food fund one week before school ends, so effectively a week ago. Only children who qualify for school meals for the end of term are eligible for support from the fund, and those who are not have to rely on the generosity and goodwill of charities and other organisations to feed them during the summer. So as a result, many children in Norwich risk falling through the cracks. Whilst we cannot change government policy here today, what we can do is urge all families whose circumstances do change over the next few weeks or months to apply online for free school meals via the Norfolk County Council website so that their children get the food that they are entitled to as soon as they possibly can. Raising child benefits to fifteen pounds per week will provide a resolution to all of these issues I have spoken about and remove the bureaucracy associated with processing the voucher scheme at the moment. Having said that and focused on the issue particularly affecting children, we will wholeheartedly support this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a number of councillors who've indicated they'd like to contribute to this debate. Councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I also wish to refer to the work done in the scrutiny committee in two thousand and seventeen on food poverty, which the previous speaker, councillor Wright, chaired. Lord Mayor, you might recall that you gave witness to that from your work as a welfare rights officer. At the first of the two meetings, the causes of food poverty in Norwich were investigated, and one of the strands looked at those related to structural causes. And I'm sad to see that these causes have grown in influence rather than diminished. We live in an even more uneven society now than just a few years ago. At the second meeting, Clive Lewis MP also appeared, and he asked what the city council might do in addition to all that we do. This was the theme of the entirety of that second investigation. And the Labour administration is proud of all that we do, including the innovative work in the degree and the way that people in receipt of benefits are helped whenever possible. And this is done in spite of massive underfunding that we've suffered under this government, its predecessor and the Lib Dem alliance government before that. Lord Mayor is a councillor of one of the most deprived wards in the country. I wish to thank councillor Jones and Davis and the other speakers, along with all the fantastic officers that we have. And I'd particularly like to thank them for the way in which the city councillors help those in need and especially in need of a basic meal. It must be restated that despite all the attacks and reductions, the shield of protection that we provide as a city council still counts for so much for so many during these unimaginably tough times. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I call on councillor Bojek Colton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Ever since the Covid nineteen isolation period, I've been working behind the scenes with my Labour county colleagues, helping to arrange food top-ups for the food banks around Norfolk. The food subgroup has been very successful and includes bike stands on my ad and made sure that the food which was brought from Fairshare was funded by the unwanted and justifiable increase of Norfolk County councillors' allowances, which is awarded by the Tory-controlled administration since two thousand and seventeen. After doing surveys with our local schools, seeing which of them would be providing food for students for the school holidays, we found that lots of areas were covered, but there was still a need for packed lunches to be given out in some areas. So we decided that we would help Kings Lynn, Norwich and Great Garmouth. We knew that students who were entitled to free school meals would be provided with vouchers, but there was still a huge and pressing concern for the large and ever-growing number of families who don't fit in the criteria for this service. At the Silver Road Community Centre, we are going to be giving out packed lunches with monies that we have been given by the Norwich Opportunity Area. We will be running Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays, and already we've had about thirty-seven families who want to use this service. The stress this is putting on our families to have enough money to feed their children and themselves is massive. And with the added pressure of more jobs being lost because of Covid nineteen, we need to be there to help our families as much as we can. Lastly, Lord Mayor, isn't it shocking that we live in one of the richest countries in the world, but we cannot prioritise or choose to deliver an effective social security system which prevents food hunger in the twenty-first century? It's a scandal which must be highlighted to all at every opportunity.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Neil.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this motion on food poverty, as it's something I've been aware of for far too many years. About thirty years ago, I started a food collection scheme for St Martin's, having been made aware of the housing and food support needs of a sector of our population. It's a national disgrace that we're still having to deal with this issue, not because we can't solve it, but because successive governments have just found it inconvenient to really tackle the issue. Earlier this year, I started volunteering at the Norwich Trussell Trust Food Bank. We prepare food boxes to last three days for those in need, and there are three standard categories, quite logical ones, singles, couples, families. But there are also two categories of boxes which left me in shock on my first day. One marked kettle and one marked cold. Yep, there are people who do not even have the basics to cook with, but may have a kettle or worse, nothing. What type of society do we have? Where not only are people desperate for basic food, but also do not even have the means to cook it? This is one of the wealthiest countries in the world. It is clear to me that a system of universal basic income would remove our problem of food poverty, food poverty and homelessness, with the very rich having to contribute only a relatively little more of their obscene divas towards of wealth. And if all housing in future is built with the highest possible environmental standards, similar to the council's Cull Smith Street passive house standards, then food poverty would not be an issue as well. We have the means to solve these problems. All we need now is the will. So I'm very happy to vote for this motion.
Thank you. I call on councillor Osborne.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased to support this motion and glad to see it coming. And as other councillors have highlighted, we know that the current benefit system is becoming increasingly hostile and, I think, is broken. As councillor Davis highlighted, the numbers of people claiming universal credit is rocketing and correspondingly so too is the number of people who are forced to rely on food banks and other sources of food provision. And that number just keeps on going up, and even before lockdown. But this, I want to stress, is not a motion about numbers, it's about people. Nobody should have to choose between eating and heating their home, and nobody should be forced into demeaning Labour because of they're on a zero-hours contract and have no choices about the work that they have to do. And nobody should be left homeless when the economy crashes, or actually for any other reason. And that's why I think I'm really pleased that there's a clause in this motion about a universal basic income, the UBI for short. Councillors will know that I proposed a fuller motion on UBI that I hope will be passed later. And what a UBI would mean is that every individual has enough to live a decent life. And the current benefit system, you could say, is a net where the holes just keep getting bigger and people keep falling through. But a UBI would provide a solid floor that would mean that no one would fall into poverty. And so we also need a UBI now to help the post-Covid economy. It would allow people the opportunity to train for new work. It would allow them to start their own businesses. It would provide a vital lifeline for the unique arts sector that we're lucky to have in Norwich. And the economic boost that this would provide with the increased business rates and the greater employment would feed money back into the local economy. And if that was done together with motion measures for a circular economy, that could be the foundation for a more decarbonised, a more sustainable society. It could also mean that people could volunteer, support their community or care for their loved ones without having to give up their own financial security to do so, as I'm sure we all know people who have had to do that. People may well ask how we can afford this, but I would say that there's plenty of ways of funding it. One option would be a wealth tax on the top ten percent, as an example. The top ten percent of wealth owners currently pay less than half the proportion of their income tax to what most of the rest of us do. But in a way, asking how we can afford it is the wrong question, because we cannot afford poverty. So to conclude, I would say that the benefits of a UBI for health, for society, for the economy and just for people cannot be ignored, and I hope that we will see a pilot in Norwich soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Osborne. Councillor Sands.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I too fully support this motion. It's not before time. Just this week, the Daily Mirror highlighted the young family working but still penalised and sanctioned under universal credit to the extent that the DWP are reducing their income by, on average, some four hundred and sixty pounds per month. This family, while in Leeds, their story is repeated elsewhere across the country, including here in Norwich, probably a number of times. It astounds me that this Tory government use the works of George Orwell and Aldous Huxley as instruction manuals rather than as sober warnings.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Any other councillors wish to contribute? Councillor Peak. Councillor Peak. You've still no...
Yeah. I'd like to thank Karen for bringing this motion, I also support it. And what I'll say, everybody said, so I'll do a quick summary of it. It's sad to think that we're one of the six richest countries in the world and people are still in food poverty. The government should be ashamed of themselves when they're giving billionaires tax cuts. And it's not fair, it should be changed. And there should be another tax for them to help out sort of like people who are in food poverty, help out the national, you know, the people on job seekers and all that lot. I just summarise it all up, thank you.
Thank you very much. And... Sorry, we have a... Matthew Fulton-McAllister. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I agree with this motion almost entirely. I am, however, a bit sceptical about universal basic income on the basis it has always been advocated by the right wing to try to strip benefits from the poorest in society. And I just want to ask councillor Walters if he will word his letter to include wording to the effect that nobody should be left worse off as a result of the trial with regard to this and the following motion. If so, then it would be hugely appreciated. I'm sure that's the intention of everyone here, but I never trust a Tory government. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And contribution from councillor Walters.
Well, this motion will be passed, I know. And the key point is that you're quite right. You could see it as, going back to ancient Rome, a sort of feeding of the Roman population with bread and circuses as a way of keeping people pacified. But I think what universal credit, universal, not universal credit, universal basic income offers is the opening of a debate about a proper system of social security. And I think that opportunity to test that out is a good thing, because we're going to need fresh thinking. We need to set our souls collectively as a council, the target of seeing a drop in food bank usage, because we have been able to mobilise support for a system which supports everybody. I have to say, the divisive qualities that particularly the Conservatives have brought to their ability to cut social security was based on drivers and current scotties, you know, dividing people, the deserving poor, the undeserving poor. And yet, where has that led us? Well, I think it's led a lot of people who are newly unemployed or about to become unemployed or self-employed and doing okay, that at the end of their journey through the minefield of our social security system, particularly universal credit, is how meagre the amounts of money are. It's difficult to manage on them, you're straight to the food bank, even if you've got universal credit. So the whole system needs a major overhaul. And there's just one thing I would say about child poverty. Actually, this is an exercise in state-sponsored child abuse. And it's going to get worse. So starving children or making children go hungry or children having to go to hospital because they've got malnutrition, that is five-star abuse. And government is responsible for it. And government has a responsibility to make sure that people are fed and clothed and have a decent life. That is the responsibility of government. For goodness sake, people pay for those services and they've been short-changed. And this government could change things tomorrow simply by ending the bedroom tax, putting in rent controls... putting in rent controls, supporting the people who have got no recourse to public funds, building affordable housing, yes, putting up, as people have said, Karen made the point about putting up child benefit. There are three or four things that could be done that would stabilise the situation as we begin the debate in a post-COVID world. And let's face it, lots of people who were consulted about, do you want to go back to what it was like before the pandemic? Six percent. So there is an urgency, there is a desire for change, there's a desire for a better quality of life. We as politicians, we've got to mobilise that, that public sentiment. Because what has been happening over the last decade has only happened because there have been enough people who have perhaps bought the idea that there are some people who are undeserving, some people who should have less, not more. And that's the issue we've got to crack. We've got to get a cultural shift and that's our responsibility as local politicians to make that shift. And one of our measures collectively is to see food banks disappear and well-fed children in secure accommodation with their families with decent work. And if that's underpinned by something like a universal basic income or a flexi-security system to enable people to make the transition from losing their work or needing education or needing retraining, then you know, that's what we need to put in place. We've got to be ambitious. There is this space, this moment. What I don't want to see, none of us wants to see, is what we had before COVID ends up with something after COVID which is even worse. And we have a challenge with this government, but you know, we've got grassroots support. Let's make the most of it.
Thank you very much councillor Waters. Councillor Driver.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Definitely going to support this motion. Fantastic. I just want to say, since this COVID virus has been about, we actually seen more people losing their jobs and more people using food banks and stuff this. And as councillor Waters says, when you see children in malnutrition and end up in the hospital, that means that family must be in so desperate times because you would starve yourself to feed your kids and you must be in a right state. Now, I know people who are living in the city who are desperate but will still not ask for help. And we've got to be careful that we don't miss out on these people. If we know all them, try and pass them on to the right people to get help because a lot of people are still pride and pride is still out there. I know this virus has actually made people to say help. And that is a really hard word to say when you're a pride person in the city, you're trying to bring up your kids, you're trying to send them to school to get the best education. The schools are changing, they're not run by the councils anymore, they're run for profit. Let's give all the teachers a rise. That's fantastic today, but you've got to take a little money you already got. So let's take a few teachers, let's get rid of a few pencils, so the kids are in more poverty. That's how this government is working. Now, this is a great shame, but the rich have been doing this to the poor for hundreds and hundreds of years. And when you go back, they always used to come around and tax the poor. I mean, you see the old films, they come and burn your village down if you didn't pay up or hang it all over your field. This is what the Tory government is actually doing now. It's going out and hitting the poor, the richer will okay. And until we get to talking to the rich and understand these top people to pay a bit more, we will never get anywhere in this country. I'm just so ashamed of these people who have got money and do not help. And you can understand, I mean, Chloe Smith, the MP for Norwich North, I'll tell you what, I'm glad I'm not living in Norwich North. I would hate to have heard my MP who do not do anything, anything for the poor people of Norwich. It's awful of rich people. Well, I'll start swearing in a minute, so I'll get off, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Driver. Councillor Giles.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't planning on speaking on this item, but to thank councillors Davis and Jones for bringing this motion. Like many people, I'm totally shocked by the levels of poverty we continue to see in this city, the families who struggle to put food on the table, who at winter time have to choose between heating and eating. It's very upsetting to see. I would like to thank the community groups that have worked, many that work so hard all year round, every year, but particularly during the last few months during the COVID pandemic to help out so many families, particularly noting St Francis's Thought Pelting Hands and the Mouse Soul Moutchulade Group in my ward. I want to publicly thank them. On the on the question of the of the universal basic income, and I will be certainly voting for the motion tonight, like councillor Matthew Fulton McAllister, I did want to emphasise to the cabinet that when we draft this letter to the Secretary of State, that we make clear that we want people to have the level of social security that is required in order to meet all of their essential living costs. There is a question mark as to across the political spectrum, as to what extent, if any, a UBI would replace existing benefits. And like councillor Matthew Fulton McAllister, I don't entirely trust this Conservative government to say the least. And I can I can well imagine them setting the UBI up, abolishing all existing benefits and setting a UBI at such a ridiculously low rate that it pushes even more people into poverty. I'm sure that's not the intention of anyone at all on this council, but I just wanted to emphasise that because it's important that we don't allow the right to use it for their own ends. But no, thanks ever so much for bringing this motion. I fully support it. Thanks.
Thank you. I could call councillor Graham.
For all our differences, it's really good to see some unity on such an important matter. Imagine a system that's designed to bring people in rather than to leave people behind because that's what UBI would look like. And of course, it would have to complement the benefit system or be topped up by it so that nobody loses out. And I'm glad that that's been raised. The arguments are about the level, but we're expecting a cut in the local economy of 10% and that's without a second lockdown. It seems to me that the government is doing everything it can to kickstart the economy except the things that would actually make a difference. Everything short of actually giving money to people who really need it to spend, which actually would kickstart the economy and even more importantly, give some choices to people who need them most rather than waiting for the Never Neverland of trickle-down economics. So I'm happy to add my support to this motion. Now is the time when solidarity is at its highest and so is need. So thank you for the unity and for including UBI as one of the most important solutions to food poverty.
Thank you very much. Are there any other councillors who wish to contribute? No? Okay. Well, councillor Davis, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you everyone for their contributions. I would just like to add that in the first six months of this year, 2,500 children were hospitalized for malnutrition. That's half the population of the town I grew up in. Now, imagine that if half the population of your town were hospitalized for malnutrition, there would be outrage, but because this is spread across the country, the government have managed to get away with it. About 2,500 people, that is the size of an extremely large high school, bigger than any school we've got in Norfolk. So this is obviously a really horrendous pressing issue. And the other thing that's really been highlighted to me from running the food bank is people who have been unemployed for the first time, who were completely unaware that they had a five-week wait for universal credit. They they had no idea. They were coming in saying, what do you mean? I've got 25 weeks for money. I've been working, I've paid my taxes. I thought I thought I could just sign on. There's a huge, there's been a huge kind of realisation for a lot of people who never thought they were going to be in this situation but have found themselves in this situation. So for all of their sakes and for, you know, those 2,500 children so far this year and no doubt thousands more to follow, I'm so happy that we're all going to be supporting this motion tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And now move to the vote. All those who wish to vote against? All those who wish to abstain? And all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much councillors. Which brings us to, well done, eight o'clock actually. So, do you have a question? Whether we can take the remaining items? Oh, sorry. Councillor Waters.
Lord Mayor, I'll need a second for this, but I would like to move a motion under part 52e of the Constitution to suspend procedure rule 16 in appendix one relating to item 10c on the agenda only, that the item be discussed after two hours having passed without opposing the business.
Have a second for that? We have a second, councillor Davies? Remove to the vote on that. So as this is a procedural motion, there can be no discussion on the item. Okay, thank you. That motion's carried.
Motion 10c, Lord Mayor.
That was 10c, yes. Now going to 10d, whether that motion is unopposed on universal basic income.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, were you looking for a proposal that this be accepted unopposed?
That's right, yes, sorry. No one's opposing it. We have a second. Councillor Mike Sands. Again, as this is a procedural motion, there can be no discussion on the item. We'll now move to the vote. Yep, you've got that. Yep. That's carried. Thank you very much. And that's the end. We'll take a 10-minute break before moving back to 10c. 10c. All right. That's come through. You've got to do that. Oh, sorry. 10-minute break. I told you. To go. Okay. Now considering motion 10c, Black Lives Matter. And given the 10-minute break and the debate continuing, we anticipate it will continue beyond the three hours. So when we get to around 10 past nine, we need to vote to whether we wish to continue. And if otherwise, we could end up going through to another council meeting. As long as you're aware, we'll try to do that as diplomatically as possible. So, motion 10c, Black Lives Matter. I call upon councillor Joseph to move motion 10c.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, I would like to thank my colleagues from across the floor for their support for this motion. Whilst the Black Lives Matter movement is inherently a political one, I do not believe it should be used to score political points. I, alongside many in this chamber, have watched in horror the events unfolding across America and around the world in response to the murder of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmud Arbery, Tony Recdale and countless others, manifestations of systematic racial oppression. Their murders were not the actions of one rogue cop however, but are instead part of a mandate given to them by systemic racism and oppression over centuries. It's an abuse of their entitlement which rarely holds repercussions and Norwich City Council must lead by example by reaffirming its support for true equality. However, the message of true equality and justice barely scratches the surface of the demands of the Black Lives Matter movement. The platform includes six crucial tenets: the end of the oppression of black people, economic justice, divest-invest, community control, political power and perhaps most importantly, the issue of reparations. None of these are without controversy and yet none of them are anything but reasonable demands made on the basis of centuries of structural, systematic discrimination and abuse. We all have a responsibility to ensure that we see some serious progress made towards these demands in our lifetime and that is exactly what this motion hopes to achieve. Through acknowledging the current brutality facing black people around the world, we can begin the process of deconstructing the systems which have created and allow for the continuation of these actions. Whilst police in the United States are killing black people, BME people are suffering indiscriminately as a result of COVID-19 right here in the United Kingdom. COVID-19 has once again revealed the systematic inequalities facing black, Asian and minority ethnic people, which has led to them being four times more likely to die from COVID-19 when compared to their white counterparts. This is according to the Office of National Statistics. This isn't a random correlation nor can it be fully explained by physical differences. Instead, the fact that BME people are more likely to live in overcrowded urban houses and suffer from economic deprivation whilst predominantly being our key workers have made them susceptible to this pandemic. In the 20th century, apologies, in the 21st century, this almost Victorian standard of living is truly unacceptable in a developed nation. The Tory government has failed to respond to these deaths at home as well as abroad and we cannot continue to be silent on this issue as to be silent is to be complicit. Norwich City Council has a long history of condemning all forms of racism. However, as with any issue, we could be more ambitious in our policy. The recent incident in which a Norwich City Council contractor painted over a Black Lives Matter mural shows the work which still needs to be done to ensure that the council and its contractors are not just not racist but are actively anti-racist. I was really pleased to see the Norwich City Council offer to commission the original artist Napple to reinstate the piece, but it's remained unclear what further action they are taking to ensure that such careless behaviour is not repeated. As such, I feel this is incredibly crucial for us to ensure that robust processes are used appropriately with incidents of harassment or discrimination in any form. The Black Lives Matter movement is inherently intersectional and as such recognises the unique experience of queer, trans, disabled and women of colour experience. This motion aims to recognise this intersectionality which is crucial to the movement by broadening its reach to continue supporting members and officers in speaking out against and con- and officers in speaking out against and condemning any form of discrimination based on personal characteristics, whether this be racism, sexism, ageism, ableism, homophobia, transphobia, misogyny, maternity, paternity or faith-based discrimination, the list goes on. It's only when we challenge discrimination head-on that we can hope to achieve true equality for us all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for that. Yep. I call upon councillor Graham to second the item. I'm sorry, I've got the wrong one. My apologies.
I'm very happy to second it.
Councillor Davies, second it, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Yusef. I'm really delighted you brought this motion. I'm really pleased that it's a cross-party motion, so thank you so much. I'd like to highlight the plight of refugees and asylum seekers in this country and the Tories' disgusting behaviour towards our friends. There's a camp-up at Coltershaw at the moment with around 90 asylum seekers in who have not been granted Aspen cards, which means they are living on an old RAF site. There is very little to do there. There's poor internet connection and phone connection, and they have no money to spend in the local economy. These people are not being detained, although they may as well be detained for the quality of life they're experiencing at the moment. So I'd also like to call on councillor Anna Waters, the leader of the council, to write to the Home Office to ask these people to be given Aspen cards, to be given some dignity and to be treated, you know, as human beings. It's also rather disgusting to see the Tories on Twitter saying that they supported the domestic abuse bill. Chloe Smith and her trums are saying, proud to have supported the domestic abuse bill today. However, none of them supported new clause 22, which gave migrant women the same rights in law. So once again, we see a government that's saying, oh, we're doing X, Y and Z for women, but they're not doing it for all women. They're not doing it for all people. They're doing it for women who are, you know, non-migrants. Everybody should have the same rights under law, and we have a government that is absolutely hell-bent on continuing and furthering structural inequality. So I thank you for bringing this, and I hope that we can write to the Home Office and ask for Aspen cards for the people at RAF Coltershaw. And I also hope that we can write to Chloe Smith and the other Tory members of Parliament to express our disgust at not giving migrant women the same rights in law. Thank you. I'm happy to second this motion.
Thank you for that, councillor Davies. I'd like to invite group spokesperson, councillor Ackroyd.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Many, many years ago, a friend told me a story that I've never forgotten. When she was still at school in London, she applied for a Saturday job at a local shop, and after a letter and a phone call was told she had the job. Come along on Saturday, they said, so she did. She arrived ready to start, but there is no job for you, they said. Why not? Because of the colour of her skin, because she is black. Now and then, as then, there is no case for injustice of any kind in society, but just as with my friend all those years ago, we know that it's part of everyday life. Black people and indeed other minority groups suffering at the hands of institutions systematically biased against them. Black Lives Matter has shone a spotlight on many racial inequalities in our society. In the UK, 51% of young men in custody are from black, Asian or minority ethnic backgrounds, despite these groups making up only 14% of the population. Recently, we've seen that BAME people are 54% more likely than white to be fined under the new coronavirus lockdown laws. We know that black women are five times more likely to die in childbirth than their white counterparts, that black pregnant women are eight times more likely to be admitted to hospital with COVID-19. We know from the annual National Cancer Patient Experience survey that while experience of care is generally very positive, there is a pattern of poorer experience being reported by people from BAME communities. They are less likely to have been involved in decisions about their care, less likely to have received an explanation of treatment they understand. It's not a massive or dramatic difference, but it's a consistent and concerning one. We know that there are inequalities and racism in the school system. On last night's news, we were reminded again that a private school in Norwich has been accused of everyday racism. Allegations such as one teacher deciding to give a pupil an English name so that he didn't have to feel embarrassed every time he called the name wrongly and classmates corrected him. As a council, we should give an unmistakably clear lead as to where we stand. We always stress that we're proud of being a community where diversity is valued and celebrated and that we rejoice in what we can share with and learn from others. But how does that translate into action? As an institution which is an integral part of city life, we must declare our abhorrence and utter rejection of behaviour which works against any minority group. As a member of the council development group, I would definitely want to see training and support on all these issues made top of the list in our programme, including use of appropriate language and literature and training on unconscious bias. We must work towards greater diversity within our council. In a fair, free and open society, we would expect the make-up of our parliament and councils to reflect the demographics of the area they serve. However, this is often not the case. There is a school of thought that the first past the post system does not help in achieving this. We need to continue to work closely with community partners and the police, building closer relationships to gain better understanding of the residents we serve and help tackle underlying issues of bias or inequality that exist. This motion takes us from the written word through to real people. We've already heard about real people from Karen. It's not enough to have the policies, it's how they turn into a positive force for individuals who may be on the receiving end of racist actions and speech, and indeed any discrimination based on personal characteristics. This is crucial. The Lib Dem group is more than happy to support this motion.
A number of councillors have indicated that I'd contribute to the debate. Councillor Graham.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleague for proposing this motion and for inviting the opposite bench to second it, and in advance everyone else for supporting it, as I think we will. And also thank you councillor Waters for allowing the discussion to take place. The message of inequality isn't new, but awareness of discrimination has taken on new form since the murder of George Floyd and its filming. In that context, I asked a question that's often asked by Jewish people everywhere, could it happen here? I looked at the website of the Norfolk Constabulary for a statement on racism, and I was expecting to find something along the lines of racism will not be tolerated in our force. But as I didn't find that such a statement, I asked the one contacting the local community police team, and they agreed to pass my request up the hierarchy. However, when the answer came back, it was that Norfolk Constabulary is quite content with the communications they already put out. If we're able to add extra asks, I'd like to ask that council also ask the Constabulary for a very firm zero tolerance to racism statement that's relevant to the current climate. For too long, black people have been at the hurting end of the notion that some lives matter more than others. You can't beat someone else to understand their experience, but you can extrapolate from your own experience to imagine someone else's. So you can empathise and act in ways that at the very least don't make things worse. Jewish people, Roma, Palestinians, Uighurs, Rohingya and indigenous people from Australia to Brazil, they all know the consequences of some lives being considered less valuable than others. And so do people with disabilities, LGBTIQA people. So do those forced to flee their homes because of war, famine, coercion, torture, forced marriage, conscription or the criminalisation of their identity. I know that nobody in my family has got over the Holocaust regardless of the level of integration and social acceptance. So how could anyone, I often ask myself, how could anyone get over 300 years of state-supported trafficking and enslavement enforced by horrendous levels of brutality and murder? Especially given the horrific statistics of your life chances now, some of which we heard about from other members. We should remember that one of the most common forms of abuse is neglect. Very few people now are willfully and openly racist, but very many people are now thinking about how we can be more sensitive about how we respond to each other, bearing in mind that people of colour are subjected to abuse by both intended and unintended failures of understanding. I don't want to be tolerated, I want to be welcome, so I assume everybody else does too. I'm extrapolating this wish to make sure that I try to give to everyone the welcome that I would like to receive, and sometimes it's complicated, perhaps by language, by expectations and by the roles that we play. So I especially welcome the educational parts of the motion, and I welcome the support that we've had from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Giles.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Without wishing to extend the scope of this motion too far, and I want to thank councillor Yusef for bringing it, myself and councillor Davies represent the council on Nazref, and I just wanted to bring to the council's attention and leaders' attention that at the end of September, migrant helps contract to provide EU SS applications advice to EU nationals in Norfolk does come to an end, and they are not intending to bid to extend that contract further. And there are other organisations that are bidding for the contract, but there's no guarantee from the Home Office that any of them will be given such a contract. So there's a real risk that from the 1st of October this year through to next June, when the EU SS closes, we could be without that advice agency in Norfolk. And without wishing to give the leader an excessive list of demands to give to the government, I think an assurance that we will have that service remaining in Norfolk would be an important matter to raise. Just another thing to say is, you know, I'm conscious that there are an ever-increasing amount of EU SS advice sharks operating, and that if EU nationals do approach you before the end of September, to direct them towards migrant help who are able to give that professional advice. If you don't have the members staff, you're welcome to email me and I'll happily send them over. But no, just to thank councillor Yusef for bringing this motion. Of course, I'll be fully supporting it. Thanks.
Councillor Erin Fulton-McCallister.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to councillor Yusef for bringing this motion, and I'd first like to open my remarks by offering my deepest condolences to families of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor and Tony McDade, who were killed by the police over the last few months in the US. It's these deaths in police custody that sparked a new wave of Black Lives Matter protests across the globe and have allowed us in many different countries, including here at home in the UK, to take action and reflect on the treatment of our black brothers and sisters. My speaking on this motion tonight is primarily to speak as an ally with black people across the United Kingdom, the United States and across the globe. I am aware from the various comments that we've sadly seen on the EDP articles and on the various Facebook pages, that many people feel uncomfortable about Black Lives Matter, both the movement and the statement. Many people feel that this movement is about putting black lives ahead of white lives or brown lives. And I want to clarify from the council's point of view to anybody who is watching this, that that is not the case. The Black Lives Matter movement is fundamentally about equality for all people, with the specific caveat and understanding that black people are not treated equally in our society today. They have not been treated with the dignity and the respect they deserve as human beings. How can we forget that black people were forcefully colonised and taken from their homes, their lands, put on crammed boats and sold across the world into the property of other human beings. Their names were changed, their languages removed, their religions forcefully changed. Lots of people in the comments that we are seeing say, we didn't take part in that, what does it have to do with us? Well, it has everything to do with us, because the systems today that we still engage with and as white people thrive off of are built on the systems and policies of the past. It means that up until 2015, every British taxpayer was paying compensation to the families of slave owners, not the survivors of slavery, but the people who owned those people. It means that in the British national curriculum, we fail to mention the history of colonialism, sorry, or of slavery, except for a week or so, or maybe a month if we're lucky, of discussions during Black History Month, which are generally limited to that picture of the slave ship that we have all seen. It means that, as councillor Ackroyd has already pointed out, black people are more represented in the prison system than any other race in the UK. It means that, as I pointed out in Scrutiny Committee in February, black people are 40 times more likely to be stopped and searched by police in England and Wales because they are profiled as criminals where they have done nothing wrong. Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, Lord Mayor. This must change. We must demand action and accountability. We must stand with black people for justice and equality, and we need to work together to address the inequalities facing black people in the UK. We need to raise our voices and demand justice together for black people. And so I am proud to support this motion. I am very aware that this council chamber is overwhelmingly white, and amongst everything else that we have talked about, we need to do something, we need to take action to repair that, because we are currently not representative. But I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Waters.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So can I, first of all, I've been making a list of letters I'm writing, so I'm happy to write all of them and follow up a number of issues. I mean, actually, I would like to organise a visit to Scotow, where 90 people, 90 asylum seekers are located, because I think it's really important that we see what living conditions are like, what circumstances are like. And I'm going to press the other Norfolk leaders to make that case as well, because we cannot have a situation in our own backyard where people are living in stressful, difficult and isolated situations. They need to know that their local democratic institutions are supporting them, are aware of them and want to improve their circumstances while they are in that situation, that location. Neneta's has provided a framework for us to just reflect on what we're doing as a council, as councillors, as officers. Something our chief executive has picked up, I've got a copy of his weekly message, and he is basically saying, you know, we have to recognise that racism exists and people suffer from racism on a daily basis, and we need to look at our lack of diversity. So 10% of our population identify as BAME or non-white, but our workforce reflects that only in a limited way with 3%. So we need to improve on that. We need to look at our recruitment strategies, and we need to think about how we ensure that the voice and the experience of people from BAME backgrounds who work here are also heard. And as already been said, we as And as already been said, we as councillors, diverse we may be in terms of age and gender profile, but actually we are unrepresentative as well. You know, there should be a stronger representation across our groups and we have that responsibility. We need to carry that ourselves. And there have been some very good motions that have been passed by other councils. And the one from Ipswich Council I'm particularly impressed with because it has built in an action agenda to make sure that change does happen. And that's what we have to do. That's the crucial fact. So I will give council the assurance that we will look at how we can improve our situation, tackle some of the structural issues and have that circulated among all of us to make sure that we've got a comprehensive programme of action and to work with the chief executive and his team to embed that in the organisation. But also we need to be champions beyond the council. We need to be advocates and engage beyond the city council area and across Norfolk. We need to be involved in that. And I know there are plans to rebuild what used to be called the Racer Quality Council. That scaled down and faded some years ago. But I know there is work being done to build that voice across Norfolk and we would want to engage with that. So there's an action agenda to follow and we need to work over the summer to get that in place. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other councillors? Councillor Carlo.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much.
Sorry, can I just stop you there, councillor Carlo? We're fast approaching, very nearly, the three-hour marker. And can I ask, since we've reached that, do we have a vote to continue or not from councillors? A proposer, a seconder? Thank you. We go straight to the vote. All those in favour? To continue? Those against? Abstentions? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Just resume where we left off. And councillor Carlo.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Nanette. I'd like to put in a plea that we as a country support people who have no recourse to public funds, who are very often, most often, economic migrants. They're very often from black and minority ethnic groups. Whilst people in the country are very supportive of refugees and asylum seekers, they're less supportive of economic migrants. And often their situation is absolutely desperate. They may be on the streets. They include women expecting babies, people who have no food. It's really a most terrible situation. About 15 years ago, my husband and I met a young woman who had been trafficked from Africa. And we've remained friends with her and we support now her family. And we've learnt a great deal about the communities who have no recourse to public funds, who are on the streets. Our friend was put in prison for a year, but we stayed in touch. And it's been a most enriching relationship for us, getting to know her family, looking after her family and the children. Boris Johnson has talked about regularising people who are economic migrants, who have no right to remain, to give them leave to remain. And I strongly believe that people in the situation should be given leave to remain in this country because they're often doing terrible work that we all rely upon. But they live their lives in a desperate way, expecting to be imprisoned or deported at any time. And so I'd like to put in a plea for economic migrants who are often from the black and minority groups. Thank you.
Are there any other councillors? Councillor Susan.
Sorry, picking the wrong bit. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I grew up in a country which has a pretty poor history when it comes to the treatment of its indigenous people, rubbish in fact. And since Captain Cook first set foot on Botley Bay, there's been a deep-seated discrimination embedded in Australian society. And in fact, they had a white Australian policy, which is actually how come my family and my husband's family emigrated over to Australia in the first place because they weren't accepting anyone that wasn't white. But it took centuries, I have to say, for any change to happen, any change at all. When you talk about education, when you talk about people not focusing on everyone in their society. Well, I'm afraid Australia takes the cake as far as that goes because they just basically ignored anyone who wasn't white. White history was what mattered. Yeah? Aboriginal history, no. And so it's about education and it's about raising awareness and it's also about the government being part of that change. Now, I wouldn't want this, all we've discussed and everything that's happened in the media, I wouldn't want any of that to just become, you know, something that's a headline and then you leave it and something else goes on. No, 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 no. It's a long road. I mean, I'm talking over 300 years to face Australia. It's a long road and this has to start here. It has to start here by raising people's awareness. We can't do it without the backing of the government. Let's face it, it's a long government. It's a fight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, councillor Driver.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just thank councillor Yusef for bringing this motion to the council? I think it's well, it should be done, it should have been done earlier. I believe it's too late time to do it now. Discrimination in the city, I believe, is still a lot about. I mean, even I get a boost in the way I speak. I think I speak over Norwich or Norfolk. And there's a lot of people having a go at me for that. But what I would like to say about City Hall staff. Now, I've been in my local pub where there was racism being spat at me because of a Muslim community centre being opened up in my ward. And I must really thank the staff. Two members of staff were in the pub at the same time. And they actually stood up and went to the bar and said, are you really talking like that? And had a go at them because, and that really shuts them up. And I believe that the staff at City Hall are doing a good job. I mean, they're outside and that. I mean, I get a lot of racism in Lakenham and I think that's a great disrespect to Norwich. Norwich have always been there for anyone coming to this country, anyone coming to this city. I mean, I've been in politics all my life and I can remember the Chilean Revolution, where we had the Chilean refugees come who were here. And we welcomed them and we would welcome everyone who come from a war-torn city or country to come here and we should respect them as one of us. Now, what gets me is everyone draw on about black matters. I believe black matters do. And I believe they are being penalised in this country by this government and the laws what they actually bring up. Now, I believe that we should really be fighting these political parties to change all this. So I really welcome the motion which you brought out, councillor Yusef. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Driver. Are there any other councillors who wish to contribute? Okay, councillor Yusef, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to echo what councillor Davies has said about how pleased I am that this has achieved cross-party support and also the positivity of the responses that have been made by my fellow councillors. It's a motion of great personal importance to me as a person of colour. And I'd also like to echo the views expressed by councillor Erin Fulton-McAllister that Black Lives Matter is not about raising black lives above others. It's about ensuring that everyone has equal access to the benefits of a decent society. And I'd press anyone to be uncomfortable with that notion. It's important to me, however, that this discussion and this debate does not end with the hopeful passing of this motion. Racial oppression and our unconscious bias and discrimination in any form will not be ended with a simple commitment or a social media hashtag. It's a battle that we have responsibility to fight until we've achieved true equality, however long that takes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to a vote. All those against? Abstentions? And those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you very much, councillors.